Are you all set?
As good as I can get.
Alright.
We're only live on YouTube because I can't get out to the studio because of the firewall.
Okay.
But we're live on YouTube.
So we're ready to go?
Ready to go.
Alright, can you just stop when you get in here?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, good evening residents of Littrell and good evening to our live au- excuse me, our live audience. Finally, we have a live audience. So I'd like to begin this October 21st, 2020 school board meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
What is the
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Do you have any review provisions? There is revision, just adjusted on this question of public actions, so if you can follow the on that.
Yes.
Have you seen the change in posted articles?
So summary of non-public actions from September 16th, 2020. So summary of non-public actions. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of September 16th, 2020. Mr. Meyer's second motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Firstberger, yes. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to accept the nomination of Patricia Wagner as part-time GMS computer teacher at a pro-rated salary of $21,347.92 for the 2020-2021 year. Mr. Meyer's second motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. And Mrs. Firstberger, yes. Mrs. McDonald made a motion to accept the nomination of Christine Israel as a one-year teacher at GMS at a pro-rated salary of $39,887.31 for the 2020-2021 year. Mrs. Harrison's second, the motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Firstberger, yes. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to authorize the superintendent to negotiate the LEA and LSSA to allow staff on leave to work from home. Mrs. Firstberger's second, the motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mrs. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Firstberger, yes. Mr. Burke made a motion to authorize the superintendent to reinstate the allowance of staff children to be at the school building in which the staff member works on the day when school is in session on a case-by-case and limited basis. Mr. Meyer's second, the motion carried by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, yes. Mrs. Harrison, yes. Mr. McDonald, yes. Mr. Myers, yes. Mrs. Firstberger, yes. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to allow a high school student to remain at CHS. Mr. Meyers' second, the motion failed by roll call vote. Mr. Burke, no. Mrs. Harrison, no. Mrs. McDonald, no. Mr. Myers, no. Mrs. Firstberger, no. So we do have not having recognitions this evening, so I'll bring us right to presentations for the first minute.
Sorry, a little taller than they expected. Good evening. I just wanted to start with my October curriculum instruction and assessment update. One of the big things that I wanted to highlight in that was the professional development that went on during the first opening couple of weeks of school before the students came back in. And specifically, we had let me make sure I'm not saying everybody went to six teachers that stepped up to offer workshops for their peers. So I just wanted to take a minute and kind of run through that list. We had Google for Beginners and Google Advanced by Steve Fraser. He did that. He did two sessions of each. Jess LaMona did a little Google Slides workshop. Heather Davis did workshops on Screencastify. Shave Bishop on EdPuzzle and Screencastify. Reena Karen on Digital Books and Bill Hicks on the CHS Mentor. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for volunteering. This is something we had other people that had offered to offer workshops throughout the year. And that's something that I'm really looking to do more of this year is to get our teachers using their expertise to help with their peers. Just to highlight some of the other trainings that went on during that time. We had synchronous instruction training in all three buildings. Jason and I did that. Power, we had 90-minute Power School training in all three buildings that was done by Andrea Stern and Terry Bullard, who was our consultant that worked with Andrea this summer to get our Power School set up. We had school-based social-emotional learning training that was run by the Building Base Resiliency Task Force members. We did competency-based grading at GMS and LMS in small groups. And we did some team-based tech training that Jason took the lead on. And knowing that he would be missing for a little while, I rode his coattails on that so that I could help when it happens. So the rest of my report really focuses around grading and reporting. So the only thing I want to highlight that isn't necessarily highlighted in the presentation is some of the things that we are looking at as we look ahead. We're working with the principals to really make sure that we are having regular and consistent communication around the grading changes, some of the things that we're seeing as they pop up. It's a new system to all of us, so we are seeing things pop up as we go along. I am working on a grading and reporting specific website. I'm hoping to have that up and running in the next couple of weeks. We are working specifically with the grading and reporting committee to not only be the mouthpiece for the work that we're doing around the shift to Power School, but also with some of the next steps that we are going to be heading into with that topic. And some of the other things with our Wednesdays, I like to start scheduling at their request with teams that are looking for some extra help and support in the area of grading or assessment building. And I know that when we were remote, we were doing, and Mike and I were doing, regular meetings with staff. We did some with parents. So I'm thinking about trying to set up some quarterly check-in meetings specifically around some of the changes to our grading and reporting. And with that, I will transition to little presentation on understanding both Power School and competency-based grading. So some of this is you'll see some slides you may have seen before because they weren't used in previous presentations, but trying to make this more cumulative and cover all of our things that have come up. We do know with the shift to a new SIS system, especially in the time that we are in, we are going to be working through some bugs and we're trying to figure some things out that we may not have been expecting as they come along. Alright, so just to get a little bit of background information. This past winter, as a district, we made the decision to go to Power School from Infinite Campus. At that time, we started to consider the fact that we were a competency-based reporting district at our high school, but not at our elementary school and our middle school. We brought that to our grading and reporting committee. It was through that committee and our discussions in January and February that we made the decision to move forward as we were setting up Power School to make it a competency-based reporting system. In March, I outlined that plan. It was presented to the school board. And then between June and August, I worked very closely with Terry Bullard, Andrea Stern, and the building principals as well as we did share Google Docs with our grading and reporting committee so that we were not making decisions keeping people out of the room. Because there were some logistical pieces that with us going to remote, starting shortly after I presented to the school board, we did not meet face-to-face. In August, we had a train-the-trader with Power School. We trained 25 teachers from across the district at all three levels. It was a half-day training to really try and focus our work around having experts in the three buildings. During the first couple of weeks of school, we met with teachers in grades one through eight to train and answer questions on competency-based grading. And then in September, and it went out, my understanding is three weeks in a row, there was a parent letter with some information on the changes that was sent out through the principal's newsletters. And it has been posted on the district website. Okay, so what are the competencies? We have district-wide competencies that are applied at all levels. We are and continue to be in the process of revising our curriculum. Math is the one that is done. We have ELA and social studies well underway. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, things got a little bit slower last spring than we had intended. But the whole idea is students are expected to demonstrate an independent ability to apply the skills from the competencies using the content appropriate for the grading level and the course. So I have linked up here and I will make sure that this is, I know the board has this, but I will make sure that this is on the website as well, the list of approved competencies for the district. We have them all as well. If you want to look at them by course, they are in the curriculum guides that are up on the website. So just quickly, how is competency grading different from traditional grading? In a traditional system, we've talked about this before. It's based on C-time. It's content-focused. The instruction is common. Grades are on a hundred-point scale. And they're typically divided by assignment and they include behaviors. In a competency-based system, it's demonstration of proficiency. It's application of knowledge and skills. It's often on a four-point scale. The competencies are scored independently and behaviors are not included in the academic grades. So again, in a traditional system, assignments receive a concrete score based on correctness. Whereas in a competency-based system, they receive a score based on the level of demonstrated proficiency. In a traditional system, all assignments are included in the average. Whereas in a competency-based system, only assignments that specifically assess the competency are included. In a traditional system, all grades are averaged together to get an overall score. In a competency-based system, the level of competency is based on trends and progress, not averages. Now that's a little tricky because in a system within SIS, it is based on averages. But we also do have the flexibility to, and we've had a lot of conversation with teachers, to say, you have to look at the trends. So if you're seeing a student that is performing really poorly on their summatives, but they're doing really well on the formatives, how are we making changes? Is that student demonstrating proficiency? So in a competency-based system, there is more of that independent look and that personalized education. In a traditional system, extracurricular participation grades, late work penalties will impact the grade. In a competency-based system, they don't. They impact the work-study practices. Those are graded separately from the course grade and the competencies. Okay, so I wanted to use an example that we can all relate to. So competency-less education in real life, getting your driver's license. Getting your driver's license, what matters? Your proficiency on the written test, your successful demonstration of the ability to complete all physical driving tasks. What does it matter? The type of car you're driving. The cleanliness of your car. I would fail immediately. And the politeness of the driver. Might fail there too depending on the day. So if we look at and it's been a long time since I got my driver's license, so these may not be all of the things you have to pass, but so if we were to break it down and look at the competencies, following the driving laws. I did really well with that. I got 100%. Driving in the lines. I did pretty well. I swear to avoid a squirrel. 98%. Parking in the lines, eh, I was a little over 90%. Stopping within the appropriate distance, that I had a hard time with. Either stopped too early or sometimes I stopped too late. But I'm doing 50% of the time and backing up without hitting anything. I'm a little bit better at that, but I do it right about 60% of the time. Should this driver, if this is me, should I get my license? If I used a traditional grading method, I would have a 79.6%. It's a B. That's solid. Give me my license. But I only mastered three of the five competencies. Do I get my license?
I look at that and say 60% because I want to do the traditional grading.
But I can't stop and I can't back up. So do I get my license? No. Because 50% of the time, I'm going to end up in the middle of the intersection.
Stop is a little force.
I knew I would get my driver. But I'll let you finish. I'm sorry. I just have lots of I have work and I'm just
Remind me not to park far.
I would say no because they got a 60. That's why I would say you didn't get your license. And I think I'm an above-average parent.
How do you mean they got a 60?
Because I multiply five times 20 to give it 100%. That's the way the average parent is going to look at it. And if I
Okay, so I still would have passed.
Exactly.
I still would have passed. If you want to think of it that way, I still would have passed.
But they're, all of those first things are all weighted the same. But not all competencies are going to be weighted the same, are they?
Yes.
So one paragraph will be the same as a five-page paper.
That's not a competency. That's an assignment.
That's an assignment. That's not a competency.
But it will go into, each part of the assignment will go into a competency? Like the grammar will go into one part of the competency?
Correct.
So that's up to the teacher to decide?
Yeah. Based on the assessment they set up.
It's been a couple years since my kids were here, but I just remember seeing an E D two. So three different competencies. Are we getting away from that?
Yes. Yes. That is, it's been really well articulated that, especially with Power School, because you have to actually put the competency scores in first. And that calculates the assignment score. And we've worked, I'm working with the principals on just looking at that and making sure that as we are seeing grades come up and as we're having conversations with teachers that we're not seeing that.
So that's what happened last week with one of my son's classes. It was the same all the competencies were the exact same because they counted each whole.
Correct. Whereas that is not what a true competency-based system is. Each competency should be graded based on that competency. I shouldn't be getting 100 in my conventions for writing only because I also got 100 on my analysis of the reading texts that I'm writing on. That's not right.
I apologize for not screwing you around. Are we using some mastery? To me, I just worry about that because to me mastery is one of the above the unstep of competence.
So right now, we are still, this is where, this is where we live. And we talked about this in the, in the, I want to say this term, but man, that was still the winter.
It was 100 years ago.
It feels that way. We're living in both worlds. Eventually, we have the four-point descriptors that we use for work-study practices. And eventually, we will translate those over. And mastery is just that.
It's four.
It's four.
So a three could be possible.
It might fall that will be approached. Yeah, that's, that's how you can, again, we don't use them for our academics yet, although we are transitioning. A lot of our teachers are starting to use that four-point rubric that we use for work-study practices.
I just want to make sure they have that mastery. They don't have to
And there also is, and this is something that I know sometimes causes debate in the distance. We don't have exceeds. Exceeds is immeasurable. So we Okay, so what does it look like in Lynchfield? So all of our competencies are weighted equally unless otherwise noted on that chart. And I will tell you, the only one that is not weighted equally is English. And that is because one of our four competencies is the speaking and listening competency, which we are in the process of writing to embed into the other three competencies.
Will they be all the same in all of the English classes?
Yes. All of your English classes across the district right now. And I'm looking specifically, I'm talking 512, although the same rules apply at the elementary school. It's just not English. It's reading and writing, and they're separated out a little bit differently, but the weighting is still the same. It is 30, 30, 30, 10.
What's the 10?
The 10 is the speaking and listening competency. Because that is going to be embedded into the other three as we do our revisions.
And then all the other either have four, 50s or five.
Nope, not necessarily. It depends on the course. Math has two. PE has two. Again, it depends on the subject area. They have anywhere from two to some of our, I believe Spanish has six. And if you look at the cheap, like, facts has six, but they're broken up by courses. I just wasn't able to list out every single course on that. So I believe it's three and three. Three of them are around child development and three are around foods.
But in general, they're consistent from first grade all the way.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Would the 30% of all those 30 points then? If you do the percentages and the points, do they, are they the same? If the assignment's 100 points, will 30% of it be 1?
30%, 30%, 1%?
Not necessarily. No, because not every assignment that you get is going to go into every competency.
Are they all going to have 100 points?
Currently, they are not. I'm sorry. No, that's fine. I have a lot of this. I will address as well. So the competencies are all weighted equally, and that's across the board. The overall course grade is made up of the competency scores, not the assignment scores. And that is probably the biggest shift. Okay, because even at the high school in the past, when it has been competency-based, this, the overall final score was made up of the average of the assignments. Which is why we got the discrepancy where we would have kids with As and Bs, but failing competencies. All of the assignments are tied to one or more competency. And the score on that assignment is made up of separate competency-based scores. So if you have a test and you have four competencies, that test may only assess two or three of them, and that's okay. And it may not assess them equally. It might be, if you have a writing competency or a writing assessment, the grammar portion of it may only be a little bit of the grade. But the, you know, the writing fluency is more. So it really is dependent upon the assessment. But all of the assessments will tie into one or more competencies. Hopefully more, but that will come as we do the work. And as we work more and more on building competency-based assessments. Teachers can enter grades by percentage or by points, but Power School translates each competency score into a percentage. Okay, the reason we did not make the declaration that everything had to be entered by a percentage is because in a lot of cases, especially when we're breaking up a 35-point test, it's going to be easier to separate out those competency scores by and enter them as you know, there's 30 points towards one competency, five towards another. It's easier to put it in Power School. We're trying to make it easier for the teachers. And in honesty and hindsight, that right there is, seems to be what is, in our attempt to make the entry easier, is causing the biggest turpus. But it, even if you put it in as points, it automatically converts to a percentage. The percentages are averaged to make up the overall competency score for the course. And then the competency scores are combined to make up the overall course score. Can you wait to get? I might. I might answer it. Unless you're not going to be able to like Okay, so a couple sample calculations. This is a math example. So we have two competencies in math. Basically, the first competency is the students can use the math skill to solve the problem. And the second competency is that they can communicate their reasoning. Two competencies, and the math grade, each is 50% of the total grade. So here you have a sample of a couple tests in a project. They're broken up, some equally, some not equally, over the two competencies. You can see the point breakdown, but you also see the percentage next to it. So for competency one, test one, I got an 80%. Test two, 100. The project, I got 70%. Test three, I got a 90. My overall average for that competency is 85. For competency two, six out of 10, I get a 60. Four out of five, an 80. 35 out of 50 is 70. And seven out of 10 is 70. Those are my percentage grades for competency two. My average is a 70. The quarter grade is made up of the average of that 85 and that 70. So it comes out to be a 77.5. So it's a 78. However, you still see the assignment score. And that is what we were trying to communicate with this to parents, was that that's how the grade is calculated. But I'm still going to see that my average of the assignment scores is an 81. That doesn't matter. It's irrelevant. Looking at another example, this is a social studies example. So there are four competencies. You can see the different summatives, where they fell and the points that they are made up of. So most of these, although different point values are relatively close. You know, you're looking at summatives between 5 and 20, or 26, I guess is the highest one. So you can see that in evaluate hundreds across the board, that student has 100% in that particular competency. And analyze, 100, a 95, an 80, 100 averages to a 93.75. And demonstrate, again, doing really well, 100, 100, 100, 80, 95, 100, 100. It comes out to a 96.43. And in inquiry, we have 100, a 60, and 100, which comes out to an 86.67. Those are averaged, those four scores are averaged because it's each 25% of the grade. And the overall quarter grade at this point is a 94.2. So these are a bunch of questions that have come from board members, from parents, from teachers, some from students. So I wanted to just be able to put these up and address as many as have come my way so far. So why do competency shows a letter grade and others as a number? Again, academic competencies are used to calculate the final grade. And those should be showing up in Power School as a letter. We do know that there are some glitches as we are working through with different teachers that they show up as still as a numerical percentage. As Andrea and I have come across those, we're looking to find out why that is. And it's usually as simple as there's a button clicked that shouldn't have been clicked. The other thing you may see is some teachers will put in scores per assignment for work-study practices. Those do not calculate into the overall grade. That's just data tracking for the work-study practice report at the end. So why does a test weigh as much as a quiz? In a competency-based system, the value of these signs has no bearing on the student's ability to demonstrate proficiency in the competency. So I think about the grammar, the conventions competency in English. If I have a student that's writing a one-page essay or a five-page essay, I'm grading the conventions the same. It doesn't matter if it's one page. It doesn't matter if it's one paragraph. I'm looking specifically just at the conventions that the student demonstrates in that demonstration work. So I'm not, I'm not looking at whether or not they spent hours on it or whether they spent five minutes on it. I'm looking only at their ability to write correctly. A student's grade should be based off the demonstration of competency and not their ability to be good at school. And this is hard. This is really hard. I was good at school. I probably would have tagged in a competency-based system, so I'm glad that I did not grow up alone. Not really. I would have figured it out. But I knew how to play the game. And we have a lot of kids that know that they're good kids and they work hard. But we want kids that we know know how to do and have the skills to be successful adults when they leave this district. That's our goal. So we still look at the fact that they're good kids, that they do their work, they do So we still look at the fact that they're good kids, that they do their work, they do their homework. But that shows up in their work-study practices. So if participation and completion grades don't count, why are the kids even going to do the work? Well, we've asked teachers to start putting those in, in as formatives. So by entering them in formative category, they're creating a record so parents can see and students can see when they're not doing the work. The other piece to that is when a student doesn't do well on a summative assessment, we should be able to look back as parents, as teachers, as administrators, as students and say, "Well, you didn't do well on the summative, but you also haven't done any of your formatives. You haven't done a bit of homework." So we need to be able to use those pieces to help drive those assessment grades. The question came up, has it been decided what percentage is considered competent or proficient? Right now, we still have a traditional grading system in terms of a hundred-point scale. So a student is proficient if they scored a sixty-five or above. We did streamline that, and I know that the board knows that, but I do want to make sure that the public knows that. Prior to this change, we had seven different grading scales and systems across this district. That's crazy. So we now have two. We have a secondary one and we have an elementary one. I say two hesitantly because we are still using the same scale at kindergarten for this year. We wanted to try, try out our current scale at GMS one through four before we decided, made a final decision on kindergarten. Okay. Why are we the only school doing it this way? We modeled our setup similar to Bedford, Pelham, Wyndham, and Hurst. Those are all schools that are consulted, that helped us to set it up, set up for them as well. And in very close consultation with her and in talking to administrators from many of those, from Bedford, Pelham, and Wyndham today, there is very little difference between our grade calculations and theirs. However, every school in the state is doing competency-based slightly different. There is no guideline, no clear guideline from the state that says you have to do it this way. We are, every school has taken what they, what they know of for best practice and adjusted it to meet the needs of their district. So this is what, how we set it up. Why have we not provided training for our staff? We've provided a variety of different opportunities for training and work time in the various aspects of both competency-based education, competency-based assessment, and Power School over the last two and a half years. We've run them through our Live to Learn Academy. We have had, I've had teachers come in specifically to work through, not only once they've gotten the curriculum revised, but to then take the next step into how do they write competency-based and performance-based assessments. In our last, in our spring, when we had that open PD time, I ran multiple sessions on competency-based grading as well as writing performance assessments, and they were very well attended across the district. But we also know that this is a tough time for teachers, for everybody in education. There are a lot of things that might not, that are taking a backseat right now. And we understand that, and we're trying to be sensitive and move forward and provide training in more informal ways. We do, we have Andrea doing more of the Stern sessions in the building. I'm going to start doing the same thing on those Wednesday afternoons when teams are working. I'm going to open my calendar up at that time, so if teams want to have me come and help them with that kind of thing, I will go and do it. And we're going to continue to offer different avenues to do this without, I mean, I'm not trying to cut it to teacher time right now, because time, you know, is a very necessary commodity. Why are we not consistent in what we are putting in Power School for the assignments? I'm going to be completely honest with this. It's a new system, and it is going to take us time to build capacity around it. So when you see things entered differently, most likely, if you're seeing a number instead of a letter, ask the teacher. And if they don't know, they will come to their building admin and we will fix it. Most likely, it's an entry error. But I will also tell you that as we work through this, there were some things that we thought we had unlocked that we're not. So now we know the issues have come up, and we're working through them with the building admin, the teachers, and trying to get them addressed as quickly as possible. But we're all working on it over and over right now, so please be patient. So some Power School tips, because this is the other thing that I've had a lot of questions come up about Power School itself. I can't see the details for the assignment when I do a class. Very often, that's because you can only see the details when you're looking on it on the computer. If you are using the app, you will just get a snapshot. Okay, so if all you see is the overall snapshot of the grades, but you want to get more detail, you're going to have to log in on the computer. I see an assignment score but not an overall course score. I will tell you that that is an entry error. As I mentioned before, our, the grades are set up to be put in by the competency, and they roll up to create that overall assignment score. So if all you see are assignment scores, contact the teacher. We just need to get the scores put in the other column. I don't know how to access my child's Power School. For some reason, that link didn't actually go through live. But I will make sure that it is, that is the instructions that were sent out by the building administration on them. And I don't really understand what I'm looking at. Start with your child's teacher. They should be able to clear up a lot of it, okay? But if they don't have the answer, reach out to the building admin, okay? And that's the process that we all work through. We start with the teachers, go to the building admin. And then if they don't know the answers, they're going to come to me, and they're going to go to Andrea, and they're going to work it out that way. I've also included a couple other resources here. First is a video that Andrea put together for parents on how to actually get to different parts of Power School. And the other one there is the presentation on competency-based education. And where we see ourselves going, then I get back in March. And that's it.
Oh, so good. All right, so I have a question, and you know I work in competency-based school. And this is my personal opinion. I do not think a quiz should count the same. I did, now I do two progress reports yesterday, and I had dark they were quiz and test grades, and I had three formatives to go with that, so it's weighed sixty, thirty, and then ten percent for homework. I don't see students even doing formatives, because we were ninety, ten last year, and nobody did anything. And maybe that's the district dialogue in. I just don't understand why we can count a quiz the same as a test.
Because you're not, you're, you're still thinking of it as quizzes and tests, not thinking about it as how is the competency demonstrated.
But if they're all different numbers on the bottom, if they're all weighted differently, how can a five-point assignment come the same as a fifty-point assignment when you average them together? Do you know what I'm, I know I'm fifty-one years old, I'm, I still want, I still want to,
I get it.
I want a hard work, rain, and effort.
It's a learning curve.
But why aren't they, why are they different?
Can I, can I explain?
Sure, please.
How I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong. But if you have a quiz, and it's five points, right, you have five questions, say, and they get a two out of the five.
Probably, yeah.
So that's an assessment of a certain set of competencies.
Okay.
All competencies.
A five, a five-point quiz hopefully is.
All competencies. So the student takes it, they get a two out of the five, so they get a forty, and they're like, oh, man. And that affects their grade. So because we're competency-based and we're testing for the final, you know, you want to know how much they actually can do, that student will then, I think, go to the teacher and say, "How can I do better on this?", right? Because we offer opportunities for retakes.
I have such a problem with that too.
Well, I don't though, because if the end school.
Kids need to learn to, oh, this is a whole different conversation.
Go back to this, you focus yourself back to the,
Yes, I have a subject fail.
Your average is coming with a seventy-seven. I don't, I don't like it, yes.
If a teacher fails to practice three times, your teaching certificate doesn't say failed three times, teacher, it says teacher. If I fail three times, you pass the first time, you do the same.
But why would a five-point or forty percent count the same as a hundred-point test?
Because the goal is that.
Because it had nothing to do with the test.
But they're, you're averaging the forty percent with whatever I got on that.
No, but, but the beauty of it, Liz, is that I could get a hundred on that test, and it means that I have mastered that competency.
And now you have a sixty average. But see, if that's the case, if I look at, this is where the flexibility and the independence of the competency-based system lives in. As, as a teacher, if I'm looking at a bank of evidence, in this competency, it's hundred, 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 twenty, and I just averaged those up, and that's the grade, shame on me. What I should be doing is going, huh, hundreds and a twenty, there's something wrong. Does that really demonstrate that kid's competency?
So can I cross it out?
Yeah.
Or have the kid take it again.
Or have them retake it, or have them reassess, or have them find some other way to demonstrate competency. I've had a lot of conversations with teachers who have said, "Well, what if the kid just doesn't do well? Put an NYM in, and then when they retake that assessment or they redo that competency, put a score in there."
I do that with summatives. I give them orally instead of.
And all we're talking about really is summatives. So it begs another question. If we're putting in, you know, a hundred-and-fifty-point test and three five-point grades, that's a conversation that we need to have with the teacher too, because shouldn't those three five-point grades be a summative? Right, okay. All right.
All right, just to square up, there's one question I have to, so a student gets two marks, five points, and then they get three five points. We're not, it's not in stone that are getting themselves.
So the system averages it, but the teacher has, I mean, the teacher has the flexibility to override.
My question, where is the, where do we just switch it? It actually checked that out, which is shown. Will this, so.
Power School does.
They'll put a yellow dot that says reassess teacher.
Yeah.
So he just.
Are we making sure the teachers understand if that's the case, they did, the teachers didn't, and show the kid where they're wrong, to build it next three times?
So again, I'm not going to make assumptions.
But I'm just saying, the teachers know they have authority to go in and they can just, if they're reassessed, just X that out, because the kid's obviously got it.
Part of this, I'm taking thought, feedback as it comes up today, and we're working with admin tomorrow to make sure that that message, all of those messages are coming across that.
Have you seen the yellow dot with a squirrel on it yet? That's what, it means teacher discretion. Like, if a kid's on the line, you can only write it.
When I've been in Greek books lists.
Yeah, I've seen it too.
I've seen that, so they immediately set up, I can count this to this kid. I don't know if they're linked, if not counting it, or if it's just.
I overwrote it with that, yeah, okay.
So, and I do know that some teachers will put in an NYM until that kid has mastered.
NYM is not yet.
Not yet.
Is there a minimum? Is there a minimum, or is that a judgment call?
So technically, the NYM is anything under sixty-four point five.
Okay, so I come at it from a parent perspective. That, that grid that you just had up there, the same sample calculation number two, I find that extremely helpful, because I just know that, and I'm sure a lot of people are like me, where you can see what the assignments are, what the competencies are, how much they're even all waiting for. It is the goal to get that type of a document for each of our classes available to parents and students ahead of time. Because that, in my mind, would be fabulous.
So I would have to work with Andrea to see what kind of reports we can run on the backend. Right now, there isn't, I mean, that was a, there isn't that. And I will be completely honest, right now, it wouldn't happen. But I do know that there are a lot of, there are a lot of good reports in the backend of Power School, and it's just figuring out if any of those can, can do something similar to that, or how to change the configuration. And I, I know from, from my years using Power School, we can change the view sometimes to cluster things together if it's set up a certain way, so that's something else that I would look to.
Well, that's more long-term, but for the short term, does students know ahead of time which competencies and weighting each assignment will count for? Because I think that that helps, I mean, it's like, it's in Ruber, right?
So again, going back to, do the teachers know that they should be able to practice this flexibility? Do teachers know, do they all tell their kids ahead of time, this assessment is these two competencies, and it's worth this much? I can't say for sure that they do, but again, that, that's an important piece, and that will be the message.
That's a good practice.
That is a good practice, and absolutely, that is something as we meet with and talk with our admin team tomorrow, that will be part of.
Okay, awesome. And then my last question is.
All right, if I can, on that, so when I think, I put on my old chemistry teacher hat, and I write pot, of course, chemistry, competencies really emerge.
The work industry.
But I knew, I knew what I, I knew what I was accomplishing. I just didn't have articulated competencies in the same way, right? And the same thing, like Liz is asking about, I had chapter one test, chapter two test, a quiz, a lab report. Those, those are the entities that I used to get graded, right? I would only reframe some, and a chapter one test would be broken down into sections by competency, and I would give sub-scores by competency. And if a kid wanted to add those up and get a total score of level, but I wouldn't give it to them. I would say, "You scored this on this section. The evidence you're giving me about your knowledge of this competency is this." I only have three of them. I'm talking three sections on a test, and I'm not talking, you know, a bunch of subsections. And I would just group the questions to get at the competency, and then for higher sub-score. So it would be so transparent to the student, so they would go, "Quizz, I could say, how many years, here are the questions in four of them."
Well, that also indicates assumes that the assignment would be graded out of a hundred, but what I'm hearing is that it's wrong.
Not necessarily, and I will tell you that although I also taught before, competencies were a formal thing, I, and Squidcack, of course, Spanish language. I grade my students, my grade book was set up listening, speaking, and writing. It wasn't set up test, quiz, and homework, classroom. It was set up by the four major skills. And that informed the grades, but my tests, whether they were out of fifty points or thirty-six points, whatever, I mean, they didn't have to be out of a hundred, because I could just say, okay, I have four speaking questions, it's going to be out of four points for that. I have five listening questions, that's five points. But my kids knew each section was broken out that way. Now, is that something that we have come out and said, "This is how you need to set up tests and quizzes"? No, no, it isn't. And in all honesty, it's been walking a fine line this year between trying to get, make change in a, in a system because we made the decision prior to a pandemic and trying not to overwhelm the teachers with so much change. We know there's a lot of change. It's really trying to find that balancing act and, and just encouraging them to use best practice. Some of these things are things that we'll talk about tomorrow with building.
Yeah, to me, it seems like this is so much more complicated than regular grading, so my hat's off to the teachers, really. When parents, okay, so my last question is, when parents login to the Power School app, you're presented with this dashboard of grades, so when I, and then when I click into one of the classes, the first tab is assignments, and then the third tab is standards. So my question is, is that dashboard grade that everybody sees just kind of as a snapshot, is that based on assignments, or is that based on standards? Because that's kind of been my benchmark, like, oh, let's look at this one, what's going on?
That is based off of the standards, off of the competencies.
It is, okay, so that's good.
The overall score, you will not get an overall class grade that is informed at all by the assignments. It's informed by the competency scores.
Okay, that's what I was, just let me back. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
I'll bring this to correspondence.
Sorry, I have some emails to read here. To the board, we got those free. I'm sorry, hold on one second. All right. First email that we received to the board after our last meeting.
First email that we received to the board after our last meeting was from Katie Morris. I'm going to summarize her email because it included some private information about a specific teacher, so I don't want to put that out in public. But, so I'll skip the first few paragraphs. Basically, she has a remote student whose teacher has gone out on leave and she was frustrated as a parent that this, the, her remote student was not receiving the same education as those in the classroom because the sub wasn't able to access Google Classroom and to, and the online assignments. So she, I'll start it. And her third paragraph says, more importantly, how is my daughter's education considered equal to those in the classroom when she will have to teach herself today while in-school students benefit from in-person instruction? It's not fair that my daughter is left to do worksheets, which frankly, thank goodness the teacher took the time to put together as well as the lesson plan for the week. What would we do without that? I'm sure it took away time from her family on the weekends to try to make it okay for us. It's okay. I like Billy Joel, it's fine. Along the same lines, I would point like, I would point out that this is my daughter's third day without direct instruction since the start of the year due to subs not being able to figure out technology, get online, or not having access. This is unacceptable. Please let me know what the plan will be going forward. At what point will you, as a district, finally agree that a teacher trying to do two jobs is not feasible on the elementary level? The plan needs to change. Do you really think this is acceptable? Would it be acceptable for your children if they were this age and remote? Should I contact someone at the state level? Maybe let them know synchronous is not working for Litchfield, especially for elementary-age children who are always on the back burner as the teachers are trying to tend to in-school students. Please make changes, figure it out. I can tell you, based on trends, this is not going to stop. Thank goodness we have great quality teachers who can hide the fact that they're struggling, but this cannot continue. Again, enough is enough. Divide classes, have a remote teacher per grade for the elementary school. Require masks in class and recess if you go over the eighty percent threshold. Common sense. And that was from Catherine Morris. I'll forward that to Michelle. That came in on October thirteenth. This email is from Becky Moore, dated October sixteenth. Can someone please help clarify of, oh, this is written regards to the early release days on Wednesdays. Can someone please help clarify how this will work out for CTE students? My son is at Pinkerton for remote learning for Pinkerton every day. Now that all the blocks are shortened on Wednesdays, he'll miss most of his B block class every Wednesday. He still can't take it remotely because it will start before his CTE class will end. This is very frustrating. It seems like the average learners get hit the hardest. I'm speculating here, but I'd be willing to bet this doesn't impact the AP students the way it impacts the CTE students from Becky Moore. I'm not sure if that was addressed.
Bill addressed it.
Bill addressed that, okay. Okay. This is another email about the early release on Wednesdays from John McDonald. It says, good morning, Mr. Lonergan, Mr. Jettie, and members of the Litchfield School Board. I'm reaching out regarding the announcement of shortening school on Wednesdays for Campbell High School. It's extremely disappointing that we are negatively impacting our students' educational time in this manner. At any moment, we could be forced into hybrid or remote learning again, so I don't understand why we would limit the ability for in-person interaction at this time. For those of you who do not know me, I have taught in a block format for several years and believe it is a solid educational model when implemented appropriately. What I do not understand is why there is a need for an additional two and a half to three hours every single week for planning purposes. My understanding on how block scheduling is being implemented at CHS is that teachers have a lighter schedule with less students. So I'm struggling to understand why my daughter's education needs to be impacted negatively yet again. Many of us have jobs where we wish there was extra time to get the paperwork done or to prepare for the next presentation. But that doesn't mean we have, we take time away from our clients, the reason we have jobs to do it. I'm a supporter of education and of good teachers, though it seems more and more that our Litchfield teachers, or at least the union, seem to think that the Litchfield school system exists for their employment instead of the other way around. Additionally, with everything else going on in the world, making the switch with no public input is, in my opinion, unacceptable. Out of nowhere, hundreds of families now need to figure out what to do with the students who are dismissed at noon with four days notice. They are not all eighteen and they are not all capable of getting themselves to and from school in the middle of the day and many are uncomfortable riding the bus. For students involved in extracurricular activities, this also now means that they need to be shuttled back and forth multiple times on Wednesdays, as I assume there won't be another school bus to bring them back to school for practice. I absolutely realize you're juggling a lot of priorities during an unprecedented worldwide pandemic and I appreciate all the extra time that you and everyone in the school district is putting into making the year successful. That said, I do not believe in shortening school every Wednesday simply to allow more time for planning. It's a prudent decision and request that you reconsider. The next one is a quick question from Sarah Rowest. She asked, would the school board consider making Wednesday a flex day? I think asking if we would consider making the full day a flex day. Holly Neves. Row, hello, I'm a parent of a first grader in GMS. We chose full in-person schooling and this is still the best fit for my family. I just wanted to share some feedback with you from other parents. I have three good friends that have children that have only been doing remote since day one. They have noticed a far superior learning experience when all the children are remote, like we have been for the last three school days. They feel the learning environment is better due to more, to more even pace, everybody doing the same thing at the same time. A sense of belonging to the classroom, knowing who is talking rather than seeing the backs of their heads, et cetera, and feeling included. Flexibility was promised and encouraged during this school year and since we have been flexible with changing school hours with only three days notice, turning to remote off and on, my daughter has personally done this three times now due to different exposures. Can't we be equally as flexible with providing the full remote students with a dedicated remote teacher to give them the same experience of learning as the in-person students get? I'm told there are some willing teachers and that some have been placed on leave and not given other options. Just thought I would share my opinion in hopes you could bring it up at your next meeting. Thank you for calling me. This one is from Kathleen Ballas. She says, hello, I'm writing to share my utter disappointment and refusal to allow chorus students to have two spectators for the concert. I initially emailed Mr. Lonergan and Dr. Jettie asking that students, particularly seniors, be allowed to have two spectators. I thought maybe this was an oversight, given this seems to be the policy for every other event at CHS. I was told chorus could not have spectators, not even seniors, despite this possibly being their last concert. In a follow-up email, I asked why indoor sports, volleyball is allowed to spectators but chorus is not. It's the same risk, close to the same number of people and easy to distance. I was told not to compare sports and extracurricular. To highlight the inequity of the situation I learned, visiting teams are allowed to spectators. We are literally inviting non-student parents to see their kids but restricting our own. We are giving other towns' kids a chance to perform live in our school and refusing our own. Then I asked why try M and extracurricular was allowed to be in person but chorus could not. Again, I got little explanation other than don't compare, which translates to me, don't ask why groups are treated differently, they just are. I'm fully aware of COVID and all it involves. I work in the school and I'm a healthcare worker. I recognize the district has much on its plate. However, treating kids the same and giving them all an opportunity to play, whatever their sport is, should be viewed under the same lens and should be attempted with the same enthusiasm. Some should not be pushed aside because the kids in chorus are quiet and not the select few. This is my daughter's senior year. She and the others deserve at least the same treatment and recognition from their own school that is given to others. They deserve their senior picture on stage like the volleyball players get in front of their parents. They at least deserve to have two people there to cheer them on the way the powerlifting players get in our gym. I don't think asking all, for all students to be treated the same is asking a lot even in COVID, sincerely, Kathleen Ballas. Do you want to follow up on that one?
Just said, we did, I did reply, I talked to the board, I implied a lot of nuances to it. And the bottom line with that one was that the teachers came forward with a plan that we approved. They didn't want anybody in the audience at the concert. And so we're supporting the teacher decision based on the best practices that gave them their associations.
This one is from Michael McDonald. Dear Mr. McThelna, Mr. Lonergan, Mr. Perez, Dr. Jettie, and the school board, I respectfully ask for you to reconsider holding student government elections for sophomores, juniors, and seniors. I was told that the class officers and their class advisors asked if they could have another year of service because they missed four months of their term. We were still in school during this time, so technically they were still in student government. I don't think that it's fair to other students who may want to run for position. Current officers would be on student council for half their time at CHS. How is that fair? One person will serve almost two years in office. You may not have physically been in school, but we were still on meets and other things and no one stripped the title from the officers while we were in quarantine. For a club that is supposed to teach students about how the government works, there should be an emphasis on holding elections no matter what. And it's not holding elections is how democracy dies. This has nothing to do with the people who are holding office. In fact, I hope they run again. More participation in student government is important. This is a decision that should be made by the students of Campbell, by class advisors, and current officers. This is about following the constitution and my laws of New Hampshire Student Councils. In Article 4A, it's clearly stated that positions are only one year. There are no amendments to this article that allow for a second term without an election. What's happening now is unconstitutional. Since learning we will not be holding elections this year, I've been doing school election research and no other district has not held offices, officers over for a second term without an election. Many of the schools, including remote and hybrid, have held elections by having students make campaign videos and vote on a Google document. We can do that too. In closing, I would like you to reconsider opening up positions up to the sophomores, juniors, and senior class officers to all students to vote on, since it is our right as students of Campbell High School, or at the very least have the students vote on whether or not they would like to have the elections this year. It's from student Michael McDonald. This one is from Justin Haley. Hello, Mr. Lonergan, Mr. McDonough, Dr. Jettie, and school board members. I'm writing to you today to discuss an issue that I have seen within Campbell High School. This year, instead of holding elections, the student council is allowed to serve an extra year, which I don't think is fair to the students that want to run for office. This is supposed to emulate a real democracy and this year it wasn't represented. What message is that sending to the student body? I realize that with COVID, things can get hard and this isn't a knock to the student council because they did what they thought was right. However, we have an advisor and bylaws and those bylaws should be followed as a term is one year and then a new election is to be held. I'm just saying that I don't really agree with how this was decided. I was notified of an open BP position on the student council, which I enquired about. I was told that they are getting, were getting info and they would get back to me. I didn't hear back nine days later, so I enquired again. This time I was told, yes, sorry for not getting back to you on this. As you know, there was an election for the vice president candidate on Friday. However, there is now going to be an election for the open position of CHS class treasurer. I was a little confused by this because now the treasurer position was open, even though they did elections for vice president instead of elections for student council as a whole, every position. If an election can be held for one, then an election should be held for all. Each student running for a position and not being able to choose which position, which in this case is exactly what happened. I realized that one of the council members stepped up and I don't agree with this. I have talked to some of my friends in my class and they also don't agree with this, so I'm writing, here I am writing you this letter. According to the bylaws for the NH Association of Student Councils, elections are to be held every year. This year should be no different. This is our right to vote in our student council. As of now, that has been taken away from our class to exercise our right to vote. Again, this isn't a knock against the student council, but I just want elections to be held for the people that want to run. This is our right to be able to run and for our classmates to vote. I'm hoping that this decision will be overturned and all students will be given the right to run for office and given back our right to vote. This is a democracy after all. Thank you for your time. And then one from Amanda Lassar. Dear Litchfield School Board, when will or why won't Litchfield Schools move to wearing masks full-time? The CDC has reported that airborne transmission is possible. So she has a quote from the CDC website. Some infections can be spread by exposed to the virus and small drop bloods and particles that can linger in the air for minutes to hours. These viruses may be able to infect people who are further than six feet away from the person who is infected or after that person has left the space. Despite the airborne aspect, I would also call every minute these kids are in school as close contact, which is by far worse. They talk, yell, and play well within the six-feet radius despite everyone's best efforts to keep their distance. They are kids and there's no stopping that. So while we have shown the virus may not start at school, it is certainly spreading there. Wearing masks, even while seated, may help to slow that spread. GMS is remote as we speak. Wouldn't it make sense to take every precaution in our power to prevent that from happening again? Especially something as easy as wearing a mask. When anyone's saying kids can't handle it, I tell them, give kids more credit. From what I've seen, kids do a far better job at wearing a mask than most adults. Mask breaks should be included in the day, whether outside or when they're actually separated by more than six feet. We've heard that desks are nowhere close to required six feet apart. Therefore, masks would be beneficial. Not easy, I know, but let's do what we can, help to stop the spread and stay in school. Thanks for listening. Amanda and Joe Lassar, fourteen-year-old drive. Sorry, I, yeah, okay, I don't, I have a few more emails that came in after we started the meeting, but I think that's the last one. Oh, there is one question on the competency-based system.
But that, again, is corresponded that the jury relied with it. So they can do that on there.
Okay.
Thank you. That brings through Super PataCon.
Perfect. So just a couple of things for the board. I want to talk for a second and so the public understands that we were able to successfully negotiate memo of agreements with our two associations. As the board knows, right after we adopted the reopening plan, which was back on August sixth, the associations were not comfortable with some of the details that were in that plan. So if you, if you go back and look at that document, you'll see in there that they ultimately were not able to support the reopening plan as written. But at that point, we had to get schools reopened, so we had to make decisions and plug ahead and then bargained with our associations on the impacts of the decisions that were made. In the case of LEA, it resulted in, I think, five grievances that were filed for violations of the contract that were created by, by the reopening plan and decisions that we had made. And so we engaged in good faith bargaining. We met for countless hours, I can't add up how many hours that were, quite a few hours, back and forth, meetings that were both live and in-person and virtual. And after all of that hard work by both parties and, you know, a lot of give and take on all sides, we were able to reach an agreement as to how to proceed. So the agreements were resolved by the memos that were signed. And there were some, I think, good things that emerged from all the conversations. So the board now has copies of the MOAs. If you look at those, you know that as we discussed as a full board, what the full board was empowering Brian and Tara and I to work out with LEA, we were able to get those details ironed out and agreed upon. LSS, the working conditions, had actually been signed much earlier. And actually, I lost track. I think it was Rob and Tina who did that, although Liz, you sat in sometimes too, you were subbing a little bit, so that's why I lost track. But we were able to get that agreement signed and agreed upon, so that worked out very well. And then the overall health and safety memo, just in terms of things that we need to do in our building to make sure our employee group stays safe, that also got ironed out. So you have copies now of the full agreements. We're going to post those on the website tomorrow. They are public docs. So we will make those available for the public to view and so everybody can see exactly what we've done. And really, it took considerable time. It was probably between prepping the stuff, consulting with legal, and going back and forth with the various groups. There was a considerable amount of effort that went into it. I'm really, really relieved that we got it done. It's the right thing. It has clarity now for everybody and we can plug ahead at this point. So that's, that's helpful. I just wanted to see if the board members had any questions for me on those documents or the outcome of it. All right, shifting gears, the other thing is that the school board association call for resolutions continues to be there. At this point, I'm not seeing that we have something to bring forward. I haven't heard from anybody, so I'm, you don't have to have a resolution by any means, but whoever's going is the delegate or is attending, because I think it'll be virtual. But whoever's going is the delegate or is attending, because I think it'll be virtual. So that person just needs to, once the final resolutions are available, we've seen an opportunity to weigh in on those as a board, and it's okay to just hold out for that, so. Again, if somebody has an idea, let us know. We can get something developed, and the deadline is really close, isn't it, Michelle? Couple of weeks, yeah. All right, so at that, those were the comments and the updates that I wanted to give the board. The rest of what I have scattered throughout the agenda. So unless you have questions for me, we'll plug ahead. Thank you. All right, it brings the school board comments. Anyone else? Ah, it brings the community forum. Maybe just state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Susan Haley, and I live at 60 Pillton Drive. I am here to voice my concern about the implementation of Power School and the current configuration of it. I want to reiterate that I am a supporter of competency-based learning, the philosophy behind it, and how we better prepare our students for their future. I also want to reiterate that I am an ally of the administration, school board, teachers, and staff of the school district. However, I am not a supporter of Power and the Power School system calculates competency-based learning. It is not, is, it is not calculating those scores based on the philosophy presented here tonight. An issue was first brought to my attention when I logged into my Power School account telling my students grade. I am one of the teacher. It went up the phone change to the administration. It was discovered that regardless of the points assigned to the assignment, they were all weighted equally for competency. I created a spreadsheet, which was used in the presentation tonight, and analyzed each competency and points associated with those competencies. It was probably told points are not weighted equal. To put this in simple terms, if you have two assignments for the analyzed competency, one research, these are five hundred points. And then an advertisement consisting of one page, pager, worth a hundred points. Your student turns in five hundred on the research project they've worked on in a month and scores a hundred. Your student accidentally forgets to turn in one pager advertisement that would probably take, I don't know, some long, and scores zero. The analyzed competency at that point is now has a family grade of fifty percent in your student's family class on assignment because the weights of that assignment are not taken into consideration. I thought there was an error in calculation that Mary and Andrea, and they were able to show me that this was in fact how Mary expected the system to work. Andrea put together a spreadsheet showing this. I specifically asked and repeated that a paragraph and an essay, both worth very different points, would be weighted equally regardless. The answer was yes, and I think maybe this is a miscommunication to the teachers. The reason behind this, Mary stated, that our district has students that have A's and B's, which should be reiterated tonight, but were failing competencies. They were trying to mitigate that. I had to think about this, and she sent me the spreadsheet that she showed me how they did the calculations. And I took that spreadsheet and put her use case, as I mentioned, to the test. The only way I found that it worked consistently across the board to ensure those students were competent was to utilize both competency and the points associated with those competencies. My findings, which have been emailed and during the draft presentation to the administration and school board, clearly shows the use case Mary explained to me, along with many variations, does not work with the current configuration of the system and the philosophy of competency-based learning that has been ruled out and ultimately fails our students. I know for those listening that this may be hard to follow, because a picture is worth a thousand words. But let me try and explain. Say, for AP Biology, you have a semester project. It's worth five hundred points. You have something else, a test, that's worth a hundred points. The student scores five hundred on that project and fails the test. We'll say for this purposes, for extreme, I'll use zero. The overall competency in the way that it is working out today for current Power School configuration, that competency is failed at fifty percent. The overall grade is eighty-seven point five, and the student fails. Which station, they... They're failing. But then when you get... Oh, sorry, I'm giving you two examples of the same one. And then the other aspect of that is if you get a hundred on that test, that's worth a hundred points, and then you only scored two hundred and fifty of the five hundred points for that research project, you get a fifty and a hundred, showing seventy-five. But the competency on that research project is weighted the way it is because it is a culmination of everything done for that year. That's showing a competency of seventy-five percent when in reality, the overall grade is ninety-three point seventy-five percent. But in reality, the student passed the analyzed competency and passes the class, but does this accurately depict a student's competency? I would argue that the answer to that question is no, because some things may say that they only got a seven on that research project. So when I put the numbers and ran multiple scenarios, it does not match the philosophical aspect of the competency-based learning presented here tonight. I did run through some additional scenarios multiple times using both current configuration but of administration using only percent and equally weighing all assignments into my model. Also used by other institutions, relax as a perfect example, using points to weigh the assignment and competency. My models work consistently across the board. And you can view slides five, six, and seven on my PowerPoint that actually break it all down and show that when you add a point-based, it is more accurate depicting the student's ability. Now, I understand, you know, saying across the board that, you know, you do formatives, right? So they're worth five, ten points each, but that doesn't go towards your grade. So parents can likely see that, but they still don't have a grade. So the question is, do, you only put in tests, and you say you have a test once a month, and then the project at the end of the semester, that's four. You think about it, that's four grades, right? Does that accurately depict a student's competency when you think about it in those terms? If they're equally weighted across the board? So, I mean, I just ran through a bunch of numbers, and I just presented, I did the best I can. It's hard not to present unless you see a picture, but I just wanted to reiterate what I had said earlier. And in closing, I just, again, wanted to reiterate that I am a supporter of competency-based learning, the philosophy behind it, and how it better prepares our students for their future. I do not want to blow things out of proportion. I have always stayed facts and backed those facts up with scenarios and examples given the situation. I would like to thank you for your time and hope that you will consider my background, expertise in system implementation and testing, not disregard what I have brought to you over the past few weeks. I would like to continue to work as a partner towards a solution to ensure the system depicts the philosophy Mary has presented tonight. Because I think there's a gap. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. My understanding, Susan, you already have a meeting set up with Dr. Jettie and Mary.
Rob Corbey, for an interview report. I think we started talking about competency-based grading ten years ago, when my oldest children were in school here. I remember a conversation with my son at the time, and I said, you could complete a lab in your science class. Do you want to receive a one, two, three, or four? Or do you want to receive an eighty-seven, a ninety-two, a sixty-four? And he undoubtedly said, I want the eighty-seven. I want to know whether it's an eighty-seven, an eighty-eight, or an eighty-nine, because it matters to me. At the time, I fundamentally was like, I agree. And the reason that I agree about that standardized grading system of zero to a hundred is because the reason, as a teacher, that I produce grades and put them up online is so that the parents who are not in my classroom understand easily how their child is doing in my classroom. And the parents, for the most part, understand the scale from zero to a hundred. That's what they love. So if I'm trying to communicate information to parents, I want to make it as easy as possible for them. And I understand some parents are teachers, and they understand competency-based and all of that. But I have to think about the parent that doesn't. The parent that grew up in a system that is zero to a hundred. So that was my personal philosophy. But when the district started talking about competency-based, I jumped right in. People who've had my class, I ranked my class out to points all the time. I had six different competencies at one point when we weren't grading the competencies. I made them categories. And I would give kids points, and I would say to them, this is ten technology points. This is twenty-five technology points. This is fifty technology points. Every single time they did an assignment, it was at the top of their assignment. It was in their Google classroom. You go back and look at my Google classroom from two years ago. I would refer back to the point system so that they knew that at the end of the quarter, they might have three hundred and fifty points in the technology competency. And if they had three hundred of those three hundred and fifty, they were confident. And I weighted them differently, and the weights were important because sometimes I was just checking in. I taught them something small. I wanted to check in. So that was a five, ten, fifteen-point competency assessment that I did. Well, when I had them create an entire app for me, they were showing me everything that they had done up to that point in a smaller base and given another chance. So I didn't have to have them reassess things and redo assignments for me. Did you know if they messed up on that Google question the first time? I saw it again when they created the app and they worked it back on. So for me, points were really important. I got pretty good at it. I was like, this is great. We went into a pandemic. Everything up to the pandemic, when we talked about competency grading, that I can remember from my school was, we are not ready for this. Every meeting that I went to, every time the topic was brought up, the staff that I remember hearing was, we are not ready for this. And then a pandemic came. And we did everything in our power to meet the needs of the kids that were sitting in front of us. We were up till midnight. We were totally changing the platform. And I respect that we decided in January that we were going to Power School and that we were into competency-based learning. But in January, I thought I was going to teach MITM to better the kids. When we went distance, I couldn't any longer. So I had to pivot, change, stop. I had to teach a different platform and do it differently because my students were not going to be successful if I tried to teach what I normally taught in my classroom with me there to assist them in a remote setting. So I changed. I do not remember a single meeting, and I went to almost every one of them that Mary and Mike held. I tried to be as informed as I could, where somebody said to me, we are definitely going to competency-based grading in the fall. You need to know about competency-based grading because we're doing it. What I remember is, oh my gosh, how are we going to survive this? What do we do if the kid is not in need? How do we meet the need of the kid who hasn't shown up for a meeting? Because those were the things that were the most important to the teacher in that moment. Yes, there was training offered, hands down, but I didn't engage in it because I didn't know that this was what we were doing. All summer, I was one of the people who was pre-trained on Power School. I wanted to know I'm going to be able to support my staff. I went to the training. The training was decent. It was remote. You know, that's a harder thing to do. It's not the same as being in a room with a trainer. But I didn't have any grades. I didn't have the platform for me. It wasn't real to me. I couldn't try to go, oh, I've got to find so-and-so's mom's phone number. I've got to find an email address. I've got to send a newsletter work out to a parent so they can understand. So it was a little hard to really evaluate that. We came in the first day, and I will tell you, even the first day in September, no one said to me that I remember, and I was overwhelmed, so I'll take that. You have to grade competency-based, and you realize that all of your assignments are going to be equally weighted. I don't ever remember hearing that. I remember hearing competency-based, but we were so worried about how are we going to do synchronous? How am I going to teach remote students and in-person students to the best of my ability? Because that's what matters to us. The first training that we had on Power School in-person in school was done synchronously. It was not a great training. It was not a great training. It was hard for us to understand. We were in a lunchroom, but the nerves were going. We were spread out. We struggled in that environment to do that. I will tell you, hands down, synchronous works better in our classrooms than it did in those big spaces. Plus, we still had no data. We had no reason. We had no parent to look up. We didn't realize that it was going to take us six clicks to get to the information that we really needed in Power School. And this is very frustrating for us. And I'm a technology person, and I know there's got to be a better, easier way to get there in Power School. I just don't know it, and I don't have the time to learn it yet. So I continued to put my grades in the way that I was exposed to. And I was also told that it was very important that we put grades and information into Power School in a timely manner. If I was asking the kid to answer a Google question for me in Google Classroom, I needed to put that in Power School so that parents could see that and would understand that. I was also told, and I do remember this, formatives don't count. But I want that question to count because it is important that students answer that information and that they give me that little piece. It's not the whole summative grade, but it's a piece of what I need to know in order to be confident that the grade that that child is getting really represents their ability. So I started putting grades in, and I started putting grades in, and then I did my point system. And I checked the box that said points, and I kind of went through, and I asked questions. How do we do this in the midst of the chaos? I got to ten assignments in and learned to start shows in our building. And I went in to see her because no one else was there. So I said, I'm going to go and talk to her. I'm going to give up my prep that I've normally spent doing things. And I'm going to ask some questions. It was during those questions that I first found out that my points did not matter. My points did not matter. So I had been grading and educating my students that this is how you meet my competency, is by meeting these points. And by the way, I've stopped doing it at a hundred. I started doing it at forty. I had assignments that were broken down. Forty points was innovation, and forty points was technology skills. And kids were stressing. What does it mean if I get a thirty-five out of forty? We're in a pandemic. And by launching this program and this grading system, we are creating stress for our students. They asked me, is this a formative versus, is this a summative, Mrs. Corbey? Because they don't understand it. And I can't give them the right answers because I'm not a hundred percent sure I understand it. And when I say to them, it's an eighty-eight percent if you get a thirty-five out of forty. That's what they want to hear, the eighty-eight percent, because that's what they're comfortable with. And nothing else in their world is making them feel comfortable right now. And so by, again, changing this in the midst of a pandemic and expecting that this is not going to impact not only our kids but our parents, because again, I don't know, a single parent is not overwhelmed right now and probably does not have the time to say, now I've got to learn a whole new grading system, and I've got to figure out a whole new platform to do this. It's a pandemic. We are rushing into something. And I don't think that it helps our students' well-being, our parents' well-being, and our staff's well-being to do this. But we're here, right? And this is my problem. We're here. And when I talked to you and realized that there was an issue with this, I will be perfectly honest. Mrs. Corbey looked at me and said, you should send Mary an email and see senior and let me know. And I looked at her in my forty-minute prep that I had, and I said, I'm going to go in my room and I'm going to cry now because I have to teach students in twenty minutes in two different platforms. And I'm doing everything I can to be positive and upbeat and make those remote students feel included in my classroom and make them feel a part of things, and it's not easy. I don't have time to put all these thoughts down in an email and send them out and do this. My first party is those kids that show up to me every forty-five minutes and say, hi, Mrs. Corbey. I'm here, Mrs. Corbey. Or just show up with an icon, and I say, are you there? Are you there? And I'm just trying to get them engaged. So my concern is, we didn't know. I'm not alone. My grades are not accurate. They're not how I intended them to be represented on Power School, and I don't know what to do with them. Do I go in and pull all those grades out? That's not fair to the kids who have been looking at them for a month, thinking this is my grade. I don't know how to answer the parent question when they come to me and say, why does my child have a C? When I do the math app, and they should have this? I don't know. As far as the training goes for competency-based learning and how all that worked, I'm on the seventh grade team. We didn't get that training. That training would have happened in our lunch, which I have sixteen kids, fifteen, sixteen kids in the room before my lunch period. So when those kids leave the room, I spend at least five to ten minutes washing all of those desks so that when the kids come in after lunch, there's a safe place for them to go. Then I walk down the hall. I might have fifteen minutes to participate in that meeting that we were supposed to get training for, but I believe, Mary, that you were called out for a meeting, and we never received that training. I asked the seventh grade team, they said that it, it, because I thought, was I, did I miss it? So again, I need more training on this so that I can be ready.
Just in the essence of I right now, and I asked it from this chapter right now. And I understand, I think, that conversation with Mary, that conversation with Tom, as far as, as far as what the new goes. I appreciate it.
Here.
I just want to remind whoever else comes up. I mean, honestly, we're going to hold a little bit. Tell me we allow three minutes of conversation with you on credit or the bulk of this, in the essence of I and the other things we get.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burke. Pat Keefe, I'm here representing the LEA. So I just want to sort of piggyback on what Robin was saying. So the grades of just about every student in this district, three weeks, less than three weeks prior at the high school, and even less than that, the middle and hens with, are completely inaccurate. They're not accurate. They do not, they're not valid grades. And for the kids in high school, it's a real problem, of course, because they're college transcripts. And it's an ethical consideration for teachers because we cannot misrepresent, knowingly misrepresent their grades. And that's what we are right now. And the reason for this is simple. We've been on a competency-based system at the high school for fifteen years. And all this time, it's never been incompatible. You've never, no one's ever told us it's incompatible with the points-based system. In fact, that's what we've always used in a competency-based system. So when a kid gets a five, a zero out of five on a, I mean, a zero out of ten on a reading quiz, but gets a ninety out of ninety on an exam, a traditional grade scale would be a ninety percent A minus, terrific. In this new one, which we had no indication, no one in the district has any indication this is coming. We all agree upon that. It's a fifty percent. So the grades in the district are completely inaccurate. You know, we, it's, the idea philosophically, I think a lot of teachers would agree that maybe that this is at least a valid conversation to move towards a competency-based, what is really a standards-based system, maybe zero to four scale. But remember, Litchfield, when they opened twenty years ago, the high school used a competency-based or a standards-based system. There was just exceeds expectations, meets expectations, doesn't meet expectations. I think there was actually four levels. But the community couldn't, didn't stand for. What happened was, there was a complete revolution within the community because they were so adamantly opposed to this. Because parents who had kids in high school said, how, how, how are we going to get our kids into college if their transcripts don't reflect zero to a hundred scale, which is traditional? And that wasn't the only reason. In general, the community rejected it. And I wasn't here, but when I remember when I first came to this school, I said, oh, so what's your history, your grading? And that was the first thing everyone told me. So the community hated it, kids hated it, teachers hated it. It was a complete disaster. And now, without any indication, we seem to be going back to that. So if all the teachers in the district were using a points-based system at the beginning of the year, how could, you know, there seems to be a major miscommunication here. And the consequence is that these kids' grades in the district are wrong. They're being misrepresented. And it is a major issue. And, you know, ethically, teachers, we don't know what to do. If we go and change that now, so the kid's grade is going to fluctuate so much, that's going to cause lots of social unrest from the community, and rightfully so. And it's not ethical. Because I've told that kid, you've met competency here. And now I'm going to tell them, no, you actually haven't. And then I have to explain to them and the parents, and we're accountable teachers and we feel really how much are driving this issue. Or we can go ahead and turn all those assignments into formatives perhaps. But that's not fair either. All those kids that studied and got good grades, now that means nothing? Plus, not to mention, we have to go through all of that with three weeks, less than three weeks left in the quarter. So as we move to the end of this quarter, I would just like to appeal to the school board to really take a look at this. And you can't in midstream change an entire grading system. A grading component of a grading system is the M component. What comes before that is instruction. We've had no instruction on how to use this type of competency-based system where points were no longer valid. Nothing. No one in the district knows. Ask any teacher. They didn't know we were going to be using points. So if you're going to change an instructional paradigm, that's a huge, huge, sharp turn to take. And we didn't get any sort of signal for that turn. We had no idea it's coming. And now we're floundering. And it's already a really difficult year. And I'm really worried about the state of this district right now as far as teachers. And it's just a lot of teachers who are overwhelmed right now. And this is just another thing. And it's unfair. And it's not right to put this on us at this point in the semester. Can we do this for next year? Have conversations better through the faculty? Show us the data that you're basing this shift, major shift in the grading and the structural paradigm on? Yeah, we can do that. But to do it retroactively, you can't. So I want to thank everyone for their time tonight. I really appreciate it. And I don't mean to come off too strong. We're just, it's been a tough year. Thank you.
Mike, can I ask a question? My mistake, because in our essay, we stated that all schools are already competency-based.
It was actually twenty-five.
Yeah, just to answer your question, I mean, by 2015, every school had to implement competencies. And so we've done that. I, I am going to respond to those comments because frankly, that was inflammatory and inaccurate. And I'm saying that because what is inaccurate? I can measure the temperature of this room. It's sixty-eight degrees. That's scientifically accurate. How am I measuring the knowledge and capacity of a human being in determining that that was accurate and that is not accurate? It's a ridiculous argument. It's off-base. It's wrong. We now have a more comprehensive way of measuring what a student knows and can do by basing it on end skills and standards and competencies. That is a more comprehensive way of reporting. And I think, you know, the other piece I would remind the board is Mary and I sat there and argued hard to provide additional PD and training to our staff at the end of the school year. And we were bucked every step of the way by the association that you will not tell us what to do. We are professionals and we will guide our own learning. So that's what we got. We got professionals guiding their own learning. Rather than us having an opportunity to provide the PD and the training that we knew was coming. It's very, very frustrating to get beat up over this when it's been clearly presented in public forums what we were doing, what the goal was. And our administrative team has had opportunities to be taught and trained on it, and they were leading the discussions in the schools. So you're absolutely right, Mr. Myers. This was something that should have been in place five years ago. And the rollout, you know, what's inconvenient is that we signed a contract with Power School in January. Nobody in January said, we're going to have a pandemic. That is inconvenient. That is true. But we have rolled it out exactly like schools who paved the way to competency ed, rolled it out. There's nothing unusual about this. We brought in an expert who implemented this in Wyndham. We brought in this same expert who implemented this in Bedford and said, we want you to help us get it right. Work with our team and get this right. We invested in that in order to make sure that we had this up and going. And I just think it's really important to keep that in mind as we, as we plug ahead. I know this is hard. But to say it's not accurate is baloney. Utter baloney.
Mr. Chairman? Excuse me. Is there any way I can respond to that? Do I have a minute?
You have a minute.
Thank you.
You have one. Of course, I can't get onto Facebook and you're very, trying to look up my Facebook account when I ran into the school board. And I know for a fact, one of my three points that I answered, I'm pretty sure it was the LEA, responding to a question, one of my three goals for this three-year term was helping with the implementation of competency-based learning. I just don't, I'm flabbergasted that I was surprised. And I, I, they were talking about when I worked in this district for one year, it was a guy.
It's not the competency. It's not the competency. It's the points. It's the weighting. It's not, it's not competencies. I have no problem with that.
You don't understand what I understand. When you're going through the same series in my district this year, you can't do competency on a hundred-point scale. You're staying, and...
It's not the scale, it's the weighting. Can I weigh my points?
I'm not picking on your own, but I mean, you said, you said two times, created grades. And I, first, with point-based media, you're creating grades. Because the whole idea with competency is like a driver's test or a plumber's test or a nutritionist's test, a person's showing competency. And once they do it, it's not like you got a sixty, a fifty, and a hundred. It's you did. And I don't mean this to sound callous, and I don't understand why we're talking about hundreds and fifties, not like a one, two, three, four. Well, I mean, rephrase that. Zero, one, two, three, four. If a kid doesn't do it, he doesn't do it. But why if we're on a four-point scale, we're talking about forty to eighty, a hundred? I mean, it's about...
But we're not.
And that's just me.
We're not on a four-point scale. We're not.
But I'm just saying, if that's, it could be four, six, eight, whatever, whatever you decide, why are we still talking hundreds and nineties?
Because we didn't, we weren't informed that the decision had changed. That's the...
But that's the point where as a district, this is, I mean, let's be honest, we'll go down something, I'm sure, if it comes up, that's, that's not our responsibility. That's, that's Mike and the teachers to come to that conclusion on how you regrade our kids. And that's the important thing. And as an educator and a parent, and I have to say, you guys know why I ran to a school with, I have issues with things going on here in this district.
And if it had been communicated to me, I would have done it differently from day one. This is, I'm not, it's not that I won't do it. I will do whatever you ask me to do. If you want me to only put my, my final app in that kids create and their final verbal or written thing, I will do that. I will, I was, I'm telling you, I did this before anybody else did it. I will do that. What I have a problem with is I got halfway, three-quarters of the way through a quarter before anybody knew that it wasn't calculating the way that it has for years. For ten years, we've been able to wait based on points. And we were never told that. And when I brought that to attention two weeks ago and said, oh my gosh, this is a problem. And I watched everybody in the school react, this is a problem, right? Doesn't matter whose fault it was. It doesn't matter where we're here. This is the problem. And I said, we should have, in that moment, right there, said, made an announcement, there's been some techno, technology issues with the implementation of Power School. Please give us five days and then check in on the grades and allow the training and the support for the teachers so that we could get it right.
And just to answer that, Robin, I think Dr. Jettie already answered that. It was offered last year.
No, no, we didn't know about, this was, why do we...
Then you have to talk to the LEA president and whoever's in charge.
It's not the training.
It was offered and it was refused.
No, this was not offered. This was not offered. The difference between...
What specifically was offered? TB was. TB was. And it was refused.
But not that covers this. This was a change in policy that we had been doing grades for ten years, being able to wait assignments. This is a...
Can I just, can I just, the grading and reporting team, which Mary referenced, okay, I talked to everyone on that team. Every single one of them said adamantly, they never talked about switching to points, that we would not be able to use points rather. So again, the argument about, hold on, let me, you start to speak, remember. The only, the only issue is that we have is the process. Again, there's merits to a, to a grading, you know, a competency-based system or a, there's merits to different types of grading systems. The problem is, we came into the school year, as we have the last fifteen or twenty years or ten years, how long you've been here, with the expectation that we would be using a competency-based system with, that was compatible with a points-based system. So the issue is the process. When you, when you overhaul from a points-based system to a non-points-based standard system, that's a whole instructional crap, that's a whole slew instructional practices and a paradigm that needs to change and needs some leadership to change it on. And we need to be made aware. And if that's inflammatory, Dr. Jettie, then I'm sorry. But that is the truth. If you talk to one teacher in this district, not one of them saw points coming. No one did. We didn't know. And now we're, we're three weeks away from the, from the end of the grade. Again, if the kid gets a zero out of ten on a quiz or a reading quiz, but gets a ninety out of ninety on a comprehensive test, that kid's not a fifty percent, our grades are inaccurate. They're inaccurate. And, you know, I'm not going to sit here as the person representing teachers in this district and allow us to be, you know, slandered by the superintendent.
Patrick, can I, can I understand?
By calling our, by calling us inflammatory, our words inflammatory, that's slander. You're misrepresenting us. It's not inflammatory. I'm just talking frankly.
About competency-based, creating a competency-based grading, you don't agree, you've been entering your grades, or people that don't understand it, on a weighted scale. And the way that we want to do, or the expectation was for them to be not weighted. And nobody did communicate...
Well, just to clarify that, so we've always had weighted competencies. So we have four competencies, as Mary said, thirty, 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 ten.
But you did it by points in the average.
But each competency had points. So at the end of the semester, you might have a hundred, you might have a thousand points in one competency. And then that's where you get your average, and that's weighted against the other thirty...
You weigh one thirty points, one ten points.
Yeah. And now suddenly, it's completely different and no one knows. We're just going, what's going on? Because no one really discovered that. It wasn't through communication from the district. It was through each teacher talking to each other, saying, none of my grades makes sense. None of my, Mary's were emailing us and my son has a hundred, a hundred and a ninety-five and a zero out of five. And instead of having a ninety-five point something percent, they have a, they have a, whatever, eighty-four percent in your...
You're not saying Mary's is wrong. You just are not. The teachers weren't aware of how to structure their grade books.
That's it.
And because Campbell is unknowing, if you start messing with one of my children, Mrs. Gaspar starts messing with one of my children's grades, it's going to affect it all the way through. So if you switch to what you're expected to do now, it's going to be different.
It's going to, everyone's, there's going to be huge, there's going to be tsunami of grade fluctuation. And parents are not going to be happy because they're not accurate representations of...
Patrick, can I have a question?
Yeah.
What do you mean? I mean, what I'm hearing is, is not only are you, I completely understand, everybody is so strung out. I mean, we started the year feeling like we're hanging by a, by a thread. And I know that this is one more kind of blow. I'm interpreting what you're saying. What I'm hearing is that you're taking this as kind of a low, unexpected change that we didn't put up, but, you know, that wasn't so long ago somehow. But I want to get to the point where, instead of just debating it, and I want to move forward. I want to know, you know, what, what is our role in this?
But how can I do that?
Well, I tell you, not to...
So can I...
Because, because, as Dr. Jettie, I sat in on, I came and, remember last year, I attended one of your workshop days? We've been talking about switching to competency-based grading for years.
It is not competency-based.
We already are competency-based.
No, but the thing is...
It's the weighting. It's the weighting.
The thing is, we're not doing, we, we are still in a traditional grading model. When you assign points on an assignment, that's still a traditional grading model. You're assessing lots of different things, like if you're taking points off, or a student didn't put a name on paper, or you're assessing how well that student does in that situation, taking that test.
But we're not...
But grading competencies is very different from grading a screen.
But we've all, so you've always done competency-based instruction, okay? So we've already had, we've always had different competencies, and yeah, we've used a points-based system. And you can have a philosophical argument, I get it, saying that's not valid, that's not true, that's not really what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be more standards-based and zero to four scale, whatever, meets expectations.
That's fine, but you didn't know that was your expectation.
We didn't know. That's the problem.
That's the problem.
And to answer, and to answer your, your question, Christina, all we want is for the district to help us solve, not spin. We don't want this spun. We want it solved. We're together, collaboratively. We work with them in conjunction, and we're pretty, we're pretty darn good when we work together. But when we spin and we don't solve, or we, you know...
I agree. So I feel like...
We call each other names, we're not gonna accomplish anything.
Well, I feel like we're spinning right now. So, so moving forward, now, what are the next steps? Because the goal of the district is to be truly competency-based. I mean, I think we, we adopted that, you know, in twenty fifteen or whatever the, the state mandated, that we have to report out on competencies.
But we are. We're just not...
But we're not, we're a combination. We're a hybrid right now. Right?
I think that's a fair assessment.
Is that, is right, you know? But I feel like also, I mean, I've been on, this is my fourth year on the school board, and I feel like we have been talking about needing to switch on the grading and reporting for as long...
Never, never has it ever come to the point where someone said, oh, well, we're not gonna be using points anymore. Never. And the grading and reporting team, every member of that said, there was never any indication that this year we weren't being using points. Now, I'm not saying that that hasn't been fodder for solvable conversations, right? Of course, a lot of other stuff has been fodder. That's never been diffusively. But never did we indicate that. We just want...
But I feel like, we've been kind of puttering around it. We've been sharing ideas, and what if we do this, and what if we do this? But I feel like we do need some kind of a, of a date. We need to know, when is that switch going to happen?
A directive.
If we have, if we had that and we can work through it together, we are all on board. We're gonna solve this problem together. But what we can't do is retroactively go back into our grade books, change that, have parents upset, you know, the whole communities, the upheaval over the grades, because right now they're not truly accurate reflections of this district's performance. But if you say, next, next fall, I don't even interrupt you. Sorry, Christina. Next fall, we're going to go through what we consider standards-based, competency-based, semantics, zero to four scale. We buy, you get buy-in from the staff, we'll do it, and we'll knock it out of the park. I've seen all these teachers through everything, we'll knock it out of the park.
Absolutely. And I have a hundred...
But we can't do it without...
We don't wanna do that. We don't wanna do that. Because you'll get the upheaval, you'll get that you can't compare this to somebody else. So all the other schools that have done this successfully have figured out how to take the competencies and then output a grade that is comparable to another school.
But not in a pandemic.
It's been done successfully. And so if you're willing to engage in ongoing conversation, how about this? How about you don't come to a community forum and start raising all of this stuff and using inflammatory words, but instead you sit down with us so that we can engage in a conversation about it, right? You're building principle. Bill has been tasked with helping to roll this out. If that hasn't been done well, we need to know about it. We need to figure out how to support. Bill, it's not a district thing. It's a school-based thing. And we've...
Well, then why isn't every teacher in the district, all three schools, were using a points-based system up until the last two weeks, when we ourselves, with no direction from the district, figured out that our grades weren't calculating right? Was that the case?
I'm gonna go back to again that we have three principals and three schools, and we're meeting with them tomorrow. And we're going to have a very deep dialogue about what has happened that has gotten us to this juncture, because it should not have happened at the school level.
We agree on something.
Which was responsible for the training component.
We agree on something. We're agreeing on something.
But let us work through the schools, through the principals, through the teachers, through the leadership teams to come up with a solution to this. I can't answer the question as to why that was a surprise to you. It wasn't to me, and I don't even do it.
Well, then, then you're telling me that the building principals, the director of curriculum, and our superintendent didn't know that teachers used a point-based system for every year since Campbell and the district have been open?
I'll be honest with you. That's a problem.
That's a problem.
That's a problem. That's not our problem.
I, especially...
That's a district problem.
At the high school, that was competency-based.
Correct.
Never in a million years have I known that there was a points-based system attached with competency.
Well, you gotta have conversations with us then. I don't understand that. I'm sorry. I'm not married.
But Patrick, that's a building-level decision. That's a building...
But all three buildings have the same issue, Mike. They didn't know that we were using points, that we weren't allowed to use points. Excuse me.
It was changed at GMS and LMS this year, right? I mean, they now are competency-based.
They're just using competence.
Right. So they joined you with the competency base. But we, we never once talked about, to me, it's a third rail to go back to, I heard our member Myers talk about the four standards, you know, grading on four-point-oh. I think it's a third rail, when all of a sudden Campbell transcript is not able to be compared. And I think that was the issue back in two thousand that erupted, that how are you gonna compare graduate Campbell, the new school, to somebody else? And so the answer is, you look at other schools that came after it. Bedford opened on a competency-based model, and they give traditional letter grades, and they make the competencies produce that. That's what we replicated.
But again, Mike, I don't have a problem, no one, no teacher in the district, the LEA does not have a problem with possibly moving towards a competency-based system as you're defining it, that does not, that is not compatible with points. We can do that, and we will do that if, if we get together and we think that's the best thing, and you lead it, we're on board.
Okay. And this is not a place to be doing it, so I'm sure we're gonna write...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm assuming I've used my three minutes, right?
I'll give you one more minute. One minute, I'm tired of you.
One minute, it really is. Again, I just want, I have no problem with competence-based grading. I have no problem with however you want me to assess students. I'm capable and competent that I can assess them based on their skills and make it work. What I'm uncomfortable with is we are in a pandemic, and there is so much going on, and introducing a new grading platform for parents and a new grading system for parents. In the midst of all of this, I feel bad about doing that, because I can't give them the support that I think they need to transition. And that's our, you want, and I think I said this to Mary at one point, we were talking about format versus summative, because it's new to us, format versus summative at the middle school. I said, Mary, you know, local year, I will do it for you. Tell me what you want me to do, and I will make it work. I will do it. But I can't do it right now in the middle of all of this crazy. And the other part of it is, because it's the other key point, we have Google Classroom as our standard platform for delivering information to parents about what assignments we're giving out to students. And then we have Power School. And this is the other confusion. If I can put all my assignments into Google Classroom, varying point values, do you know what I mean, and then put one summative for each unit, like, here's unit one, here's unit two, here's unit three, I have no problem doing that. But I'm, I was confused about whether we have to put every single assignment in Google Classroom and in Power School. So these are things that could be considered, that if we are truly going to competency-based and we wanna put that big umbrella assessment in, right? Unit one, I'm gonna do four units over the core unit one, it's gonna be out of a hundred and fifty points. I can put that in at the end of two weeks. But in the meantime, every day, there's gonna be something in Google Classroom that a parent can go to and refer to and see how that child is building up to showing me that competency. I have no problem with that. But again, communication in the midst of pandemic is hard for everyone, because everybody's putting out fires all of the time. So it's not a surprise that things get missed. And I just think this was something, not intentionally, got missed. But we're here, we have to come up with a solution. So again, please remember, we're in a pandemic. Every student is stressed out, who's, whether they're in or out. Every parent is stressed, who's trying to do both, and to throw new things at them without having the resources there to answer their questions is hard. And we're the resource. We're the one they email. We're the one that they call and say, it doesn't, this doesn't make sense. But if we don't have the answers, that just creates more stress.
Is there anyone else?
I just started attending the grading and reporting committee meeting last year, and I don't remember points being discussed, but I do, I did actually, I have access to the folder, and I did find actually four agendas that had four versus ten-point scale, and then another one that had three versus four-point scale. So I don't think it wasn't discussed at some point. I just don't know what the discussion was.
It's weighting, not points. It's not really points that matter. I can do it on a one, two, three, four. I can, it's, it's the weighting of the really big summative versus the medium summative versus the checking summative. And that's new to us at LMS is that we have to now do format versus summative, and there's no in-between for us. And that's what I think wasn't communicated, is that when we put a grade into Power School, we can't put those middle grades in anymore. We have to wrap it all into one big summative. And again, this is about training, communication. We're in a pandemic. It's hard to get all that information to...
And I, I think once Dr. Jettie meets with the admin team tomorrow, that we'll have some more in some further.
Yeah. And, and Tyler, the other thing is, we've been talking about, with all due respect, we've been talking about the zero to four for years since I've been here. And we were at that point before I came here. It's just that we've been using a points-based system that's been the best, that's been the practice at, in the district for twenty years, or fifteen years at least.
Well, it sounds like a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this, but nobody made the decision. The grading and reporting task force has been kind of stagnant. And that's, I mean, that's my perspective. And, and the school board task, Mike and Mary, to get us there, to cross that finish line. We've been working on this forever. Let's, let's do this. We need, you know, we need to get buy-in from the teachers. We need to do training. I attended a, a, a teacher workshop last year where I, I saw teachers working together and writing competencies and planning units by design, and, you know, that stuff totally keeps me out. So I know the work has been ongoing. It's hard for me to believe, like, like Mike and Mary said, that this is a total surprise. And if there is a, a gap in the communication, then that needs to be addressed, absolutely one hundred percent. But I know this work has been ongoing. I know Mary's been working hard on this for the past two years. We talked about it at the PERT committee. We talked about it in curriculum review and design. We talked about it at our school board meetings. I wanna move forward with this. I want, I wanna get us there. And I understand this is, you know, this is a really taxing, terrible time to be a teacher, frankly. But I think, I think too, it's frustrating for us when we're trying to offer things like professional development. Let's learn about this. Let's talk about this. And, and we have met obstruction on that.
Well, we had in the past gone to workshops on it, and, and this is not your fault, any of the administrators or people on the board right now. Like they say, we've been talking about the one, two, three, four scaling.
I know.
For like ten years, and it never happened. It's kind of like them saying, you know, the boogeyman's gonna get you, the boogeyman's gonna, and that's not the right analogy. But you know what I mean? So you don't, it doesn't become the most important thing in your life because we've been talking about it for so long and it's never actually happened. And the fact that you guys wanna make it happen, and we didn't understand that, isn't the issue. It's the weighting that's the issue. It's not whether we have to do competency-based. Your teachers will be okay with that. It's that we went into this school year by nobody's fault. Again, I don't think anybody set out to see this happen.
Right.
But we went in understanding, thinking that our platform, the software that we're using was gonna do the same thing that it has always done for us. And we didn't get enough training in that because we were so focused on how are we gonna teach in this new environment. So it's not whether, we're not arguing about competency-based, and that's really, it has nothing to do with, it's the, it's the weighting.
I get that.
We, we, we just, we just feel like Tina, we just feel like it's the boy who cried wolf for fifteen years since I've been here. We've been talking about zero to four scale and wolf, 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 wolf. And finally, you know, now the, now the wolves are devouring the shepherd, uh, 'cause no one's listening anymore. No one's...
I, I totally understand that, but we need, we need you guys to support us in that too, and to get us to that point.
Yeah, we will.
Sorry, Jennifer. I'm Jennifer DeHern, and I live at Main Bridge Street. So I've listened to Mary's presentation and the teachers' concerns. As a parent, my concern is, I keep hearing it was a bad timing. We're in a pandemic, and it is what it is. However, how does this platform work for students who are remote a hundred percent of the time? Is it not the most important thing, the in-class assessment with the teacher, to physically be with the student and see how they are doing on competencies?
That can be done as very, it can be done about.
How? When students aren't being heard through email, are being put on mute in the Zoom meeting or the Google Classroom, how is that being done? The teachers aren't assessing the students. And it's not because they're a bad teacher. They're trying to do two jobs at once. How are they physically capable to assess a student when they are teaching in-class students and remote students at the same time?
That is, I, I don't...
That's a problem.
I don't have the answer. And if that is not happening, then that is something that we need to do.
Yeah, because there's a small percentage who are remote right now, but there's likely, very likelihood, the good likelihood, that the whole district's gonna be remote pretty soon. So how's this gonna work?
Is there anyone else who wants to input? Thank you. We'll move on. General business, public minister, October seventh, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from October seventh.
For the discussion. We're doing not all the papers. Saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close.
Just, for the report that I sent last week, let's go through some updates. The LMS, the LMS canopy project, we've got a revised schedule from the contractor. They'll be back this Friday. Backfilling the site will be completed. They'll have beginning of the steelwork by the end of next week and their proposed finish date. They'll be done the first week of December, fully completed.
That's already changed from the last one.
Yeah.
And that's my concern. That was my concern when I asked you two weeks ago, like, as far as the objective completion date. So I guess my question to you now is, if they exceed the date that allows us to get money from the state, who is gonna pay us back? They haven't done anything now, yeah, for like three weeks.
Yep. Yep. And they're very aware, he's been helped by the, we've had to make some adjustments based on, with the architect working with the architect and the contractor, based on doors, things that were getting stretched out further than we could afford to take.
That's fine. But my concern is...
We've made those adjustments, and that's what this, this schedule...
Yeah. My concern is that money's coming from the state, but it's the deadline.
Deadline is the December thirty-first.
His latest time frame hasn't done on December fourth.
Yeah.
The, the holdup is, it's the same thing that everybody's encountering trying to buy any. Stuff is backward and... But again, that's not our problem.
Absolutely. No.
And that's, so I'm just wondering, is there provision in the contract that if he exceeds the deadline, that he's responsible?
I don't think we've discussed that, but we could discuss that with, with David.
I guess so.
There could be, I could go back and review the contract.
Is there also an appeal process through the state? Because knowing that, you know, I'm sure other districts are facing the same thing. If it's supply related, then maybe we push back on at least a week.
The statewide call on Monday, there were districts pushing the envelope on this, and we're told, absolutely not. It's got to do with when the money sunsets from the state, and the thirty-first is the hard deadline. But I could just tell by the pushback, we didn't push back. It was less than eight days early. But it, it showed me that everybody backed from the same corner. Of course, everybody's...
So if other districts keep pushing back, it could benefit from that. If this gets pushed again, but a lot of it has been shop drawings or materials and that kind of... Tax rate was officially set, actually, yesterday. Provide some of that information to Dr. Jettie. It is looking like with our return to the taxpayers, plus the significant change in assessed valuation of the town, we're looking at a three dollar and twenty-three cent deduction per house on the school side. So that's, we went from fifteen thirty-five to eleven ninety-nine for the tax rate.
Do you see the numbers again?
What's that?
Are they in there, or can you see if they're coming down?
Fifteen thirty-five.
Yeah.
To eleven ninety-nine.
Okay.
And that's mostly...
Fifteen thirty-nine to what?
Fifteen thirty-five to eleven ninety-nine.
And that's in the tax rate?
That's for the local school. So we don't know, I'm not sure the, I'd have to do a comparison. I mean, just whole separate things as well. But it looks like, at least from the schools, there will be some relief in terms of taxes.
I don't know. I mean, speaking from my, I mean, I think the average increase in home value was like thirty-three percent. So this is twenty, it's like a twenty-two percent decline. So, but everyone's inflation went up, right?
Everybody. The town as a whole.
Right.
Went up over two hundred and sixty million dollars. And that increases your, the tax base, the housing budget. I'll go into, to this point, we've started budgeting. The department has in directors this week. So we're working through that. At this point, I've received the whole departments except for salaries and benefits. That takes a little more time to go. Should have that some point next week. We will be ready to go for November fifth. And...
Will we have PAF's revenue?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And will you have a default revenue? I know you can list default, like everything. Default the...
Default revenue, preliminary tax rate estimates, everything will be ready now. And then for this year, I just noted in here that we had budgeted last year for two dollars forty-seven cents per gallon for oil. Our contract came in at a dollar forty-nine, so there's an estimated savings this year of almost forty thousand dollars. And in terms of propane, we budgeted for a dollar fifty-two, came in at one thirty-two. So that's an estimate of just opening that.
So you just go one type when you were gonna ask about it, but you just said, the first one, you, you put down propane. It's supposed to be oil.
That's correct.
Yeah. 'Cause you have propane twice, but I figured it was oil.
Yeah. Wouldn't make much sense to get propane from two different colors, I guess. So that's what I have for now. I know Mike and myself will go through some of the general budget goals as well. So, uh, that's what I have for now. I know Mike and myself will go through some of the general budget goals as well. Give us the budget schedule.
Can I just walk the board through the budget schedule for a second?
You want to come up to Mike, do you want to sit down? Um, so the budget schedule that we put together, so reminder to the board that we're changing things a little bit this year. What I would envision is setting up the board, just like we are tonight, although if you have feedback for us and want to change that, let us know that. Um, but we have the board here on the floor, and then, um, the various department heads would be presenting from here. We do have the slides, so that may be something that we want to utilize, but you'll have access to it on your laptops. So you'll be able to click in and view it there, so it's really not necessary for you to spin around and look. That would be more for the public view. And, um, and then what we would do is walk through each one of the budgets. So think of those two nights, the 5th and 10th, as replacing the Saturday event. So all the department heads will be here and directors to make their presentations to you. The other piece is that the budget committee is invited, so this is a joint committee. And so they should be participating by observing what we present to you, okay? So it's a joint committee for them to observe. And if you look at the first agenda, so we broke this into two parts. On the 5th, we're going to present educational programming. So I'll present my overview, Corey will do his overview of what we put together. And then we're going to hit the three schools, CHS, LMS, GMS. I pick that order because I want Dan to go last. I don't think it's fair to build up with the new guys, so we will let him go after the other two principals, followed by curriculum. Mary will present her initiatives, technology, Jason will be here to present his. And then Devin will present special services. And we tried to provide a time allocation approximation. Our goal is to end by 9:30, so to keep it to three hours. And at the very end, we have a budget committee slash community input question and answer. So it's really the opportunity for, the board is hearing stuff, but if there are things that members of the committee or, or community want to highlight or punctuate, they'll be able to do that at the end. The second night is going to be focused on operations and support. We're going to have food service lead the way, followed by facilities, business, the business department, and the transportation, which is lumped together. We'll then present the SAU and the school board budgets. Those are pretty quick because they tend to be smaller budget pieces. And then Holly will present the HR salaries and benefits part, so that'll be the bigger look at the end. At that point, we would expect the school board to engage in a deeper deliberation. It doesn't mean that you haven't done that prior, but you have that hour reserved there in order to do it. And then the community input at the very end for 30 minutes, and that'll stick us to the two-hour timeline. I'm sorry, three-hour timeline. The, the next thing that occurs is on the 12th. It goes...
Just clarify, you said it's going to be like a dual meeting, meeting. Where in actuality, the budget committee was invited to attend in the audience, because they are the audience. They're not involved as far as...
Correct.
In our process. I mean, at the end, there's going to be a period of time where they can ask some clarifying questions.
Correct.
And then they're going to sit there and dissect the budgets.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure it's clear that, I mean...
The goal is that they, they sit through as we go line by line.
Right, they'll have an opportunity to sit through rather than...
So they don't have to, they don't have to go twice.
Do you know, I understand, so I mean, they can come if they want to. They don't have to come. I mean, I don't know if, maybe there's a formal meeting, but what I...
There's a meeting of the budget committee as well.
Okay. I just want to clarify though that they're not, I mean, this is our budget and this is our, our meeting. They're attending, so they'll have clarification and hopefully simplify the process. But then they'll have enough to ask questions and get, I mean, there's only X amount of time for probably them to ask questions, but also any of the public that's here.
The, the key thing is that the board's going to make cuts. You're going to say, we don't want to do this, adjust that, move this, et cetera. But they're going to watch that happen as opposed to, uh, at the conclusion of that. So now we have the school board's recommended budget that we take forward to the budget committee on the 12th, two days later. And then we begin the process all over again with people who've never heard the presentations. And if you recall last year, that, um, I think that took three meetings. It really dragged on with presentations, and it was a complete replication of what had already occurred on the Saturday. So, uh, so the belief going into this is by all being together and, and watching the creation of this budget, they will then understand how things are, and then they can get in and say, you know, I disagree with this, or I want to do something further. But at least we're not re-presenting all over again and explaining all the details because those will have been explained. So you're absolutely right, Brian. It's to observe. It's not, it's not for them to start taking action. The board hasn't acted yet. But it is an opportunity to say, you know, I'm, I'm not clear about this, or tell me more about that so that we can just clarify what that is. Or if you don't ask a question about something, because you know how all the numbers match up, they could certainly say, tell me about this number on this page, and we can help answer that, so. If it works right, it'll be a streamlined process and, and just as effective as what we've done. The, the one caveat is that it's a tighter turnaround. So we, we probably would have had the Saturday, like this Saturday, or maybe even last Saturday, and we would have had more time to get stuff turned around. We front-loaded our effort to get the budget developed, the default budget developed, et cetera. So, um, in theory, we should be, um, we should have a more complete package for the board when we come in on the 5th, so that you see the whole, the whole kit and caboodle that's all put together at that point.
So we also have the ability to have multiple screens at the meeting, or I can be working in real time. Next quarter turnaround between the 10th and 12th, I'll be able to get things ready.
So when will we receive that?
That's what I was saying.
When?
When will, when will the board get their copy? Because we generally have to...
Very soon.
We're, no, so, so let me, let me tell you. We, we're finishing our budget presentations with the, uh, budget development with the directors this week. So we're about halfway done. Couple groups to do tomorrow, a few Friday, and then that will wrap up.
We have Dan tomorrow, we have Barry tomorrow, and Bill Friday.
So do you have anything that you can submit to us now? Do you have any that you can submit to the board now?
I don't want to review.
Yeah.
Could we get it by...
Do you want it piecemeal or do you want it packaged?
I would run out of the package. Could we get it by...
I'd rather have whatever you have now, so I can secondly put it.
Yeah.
And then give us the whole package, but if you have like three or four budgets right now, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the board. I'd like something to have.
Those budgets we receive, I think they're by mine, because 30...
You want our copy, or if I could have pulled her share at the school where that's like finished, I'd put them in that PDFs.
And then you can go in and examine them there.
I'll just do that.
It's easier. I mean, you don't have to worry about printing it later, but right now.
This is one of those tricky things because it's, it's one of the few times that I say, I'd like that on paper, please.
I'd like to have it on paper.
Absolutely. I mean, if we can get it right now on PDF.
Yeah, oh, I, yeah.
I mean, you get a book, don't look in, but I mean, at least this way I can, I would finish up working on the director's.
Um, so one of the things I wanted to ask the board is, so we're sort of developing what we see as the budget goals, the big, high-level budget goals, and I, I did want to pause and ask the board, are there things that you're expecting us to bring forward? You know, we're, we're developing this. We're trying to maintain the momentum that we have on various projects. We are attempting to realign some staffing in order to better meet needs, especially in later the COVID environment. And specifically, I would say that our, our tech department is backed into the corner. And so we are trying to find a way to...
Call Keith though.
Make that better, right? So, um, so we are trying, those are initiatives that we intend to bring forward. It doesn't mean the board's going to support them, but I just want to say that those are the efforts that we're taking. We've asked our teams to try to be as level as possible, um, and yet to make the headway on the building projects that we're making progress on, and to take staffing positions and realign them into better technology support for our teachers. So those are two big soundbites, I guess, that we have. But are there things you want to see?
I think that's the biggest thing that, I already had a conversation with you, but I think just through this whole process we've gone through, it, it shows how fragile our tech department is and our tech resources and the need. And I don't think the complaint will come, or the concern to get a Chromebook in each kid's hand. I don't know where that stops, but I, I would have it down at GMS the entire time. I don't know, can we guard in the first grade, but I mean, I think every other grade can handle it.
So Jason asked with that into his initial budget to get, start looking at the first years and to start planning Chromebook ad touchings to account for those lower rates that they may not necessarily have to sign. So he's, he brings that up.
We're not that far off, I know that, as far as numbers, so it's just a matter of bringing it up. And I, I think that's our, our biggest area of opportunity right now.
So, so with that, Brian, what's become very obvious is that additional technicians or technician, I'm going to talk one technician, to help repair. It's, so Brendan, who has tremendous responsibility for our network administration, is also playing Frankenstein with Chromebooks all the time, trying to fix this, replace that. And we really need somebody who can take care of that so that we can pay attention to. So what, so what they're nervous about is that if they lose sight of some of the security needs on the network side, because they're paying attention to all the other demands, it, it could come back to haunt us in a pretty bad way, so.
Jason, the guard, probably do full days of Chromebook there. You know, taking some of the holidays and something where he's out of one, he's out of the things to do. Brendan's out of the things to do. Andrea has a case for, I mean, they are really, really stretched.
What about additional support to teachers?
So then this, the second major initiative that we intend to come forward with is an ask for tech integrators at each of the schools.
Thank you.
We, we absolutely feel that we need somebody whose job it is to dedicate, uh, support real-time in the classrooms for our educators. So, so that's another piece that we've identified, recognized, I mean, that COVID's made it even more obvious, so. So we're going to ask for that, and, um, you know, we'll explain how we intend to pay for that. But we feel strongly that now is the time to make sure our teachers have that support. So it's a twofold approach. It's support in the schools, dedicated support in the schools, but it's also, um, you know, frankly, somebody who can just be a technician and make repairs as needed.
And I strongly feel that the public will understand the need for those positions.
Yeah.
Can I just ask, like, I know a lot of districts that have different support staff. And our school librarians are all from, they're all at different opportunities.
Say it again?
I'm just wondering, do we look, do we look at any other ways of repairing, taking off the tech plate? I know districts have done different things, or in my district, the librarians are all there. Have we looked in to see if there's any staff that they could utilize now or develop?
Let me take that back to Jason, but it's, it's a different skill set to...
Like, and they went to training and they, I'm just wondering. They, they found, they had a need and they have availability. I'm just wondering, do we look at that? Do you just look at the others or any availability that we were asking?
Well, and, and Jason has also talked about, um, what the organizational structure looks like at the end. So if additional personnel come along, you know, how do we intend to organize them? Like who reports to who kind of thing? So, um, he feels it's very important that the IT people are all kind of reporting to the director and not, um, it becomes a building-based person who answers to the principal and not necessarily everybody else. So it's just important that we structure that properly. So why am I going down that road? Because I fear if the librarians are doing it, um, and it becomes a building-based thing, it could get fractured a little bit versus Jason overseeing that. And the librarians don't report to Jason, so that's, that's a potential pickle in there, but... Did, does the board have any other major initiatives? I mean, you've heard me give you soundbites of what we're focusing on, but I just want to make sure that we're not missing something that you really want us to be sure we address with this.
So I think technology's our biggest area. Again, we haven't seen anything as far as budgets, but, I mean, the way I visualize it, budgets coming to us are going to be as flat as can be for this year. I mean, the budget committee cut them down like nothing, and I, I think we should obviously look at templates of this year's from last year. We, we just eliminated those one-time expenditures, and we look, you know, if there are other one-time expenditures need to be added in, those get added in, those get highlighted, and it should be an easy process for me. Because I mean, if you come to us and say your supply line's up 4% or something, just go to it.
Yeah.
Just kind of go.
I, I, I think going to that with the initial, you know, communication out to the directors and such, that now we're not looking at applying CTE, we're not looking at bringing anything up. Every new spending is going to be a very, very hard sell, for the board and the budget.
No, that depends on where it is, but what I'm saying is...
Keep it, I say keep it as a minimum and try and stay within the parameters of what we had last year.
I think the budget committee has been quite a bit cutting as far as supplies in different areas. We tried to get them some monies back, but, you know, aside from salaries and benefits and those type of insurance. I mean, we're not in control of those.
I think increases, you probably see some increases, I see increases in technology, and you'll see increases out.
But I think we can justify technologies enough.
Yeah, exactly.
Corey, I have a question for you. Um, the, we got an email about the additional CARES revenue. Mike said it was about $260,000. Do we need to have another special hearing to accept those funds?
The impression that I've gotten is that it's going to be added into our advocacy payments.
Okay.
It's money that we will, we'll receive in that way.
Okay. And has that been slated for, for, like, I think Tara asked the question, how much have we spent on COVID preparing this to reopen our schools and sharing?
We're looking at, you know, the ventilation product.
Right.
Is, is a major piece. That's where a lot of, a lot of our money is going towards at this point.
But it's not the main, it's just...
Well, I know, I just like to say it...
But they're all kind of, I would put it together, a lot of the fire, but the fire, the heat, you know, spent at different camps, or pulled back together, you know, the two trades that I need to...
Well, I, that's what I mean though. I mean, if, if that is CARES Act money, specifically for reimbursement for COVID expenses, I would like to see a report of our COVID expenses so far. And as with that, I mean, and whether or not that money is already spent or...
I think the community looks at that saying, oh my gosh, look at that extra money, but how much of that have we already spent? You know, we mailed it, we five weeks in, but I know there have been significant expenditures, right?
No, my point is we're five weeks in, we still have another, you know, not even another year to go.
Right.
I mean, we're going to spend money.
And for continually identifying needs, right?
Well, so, look, we're already, I'm already making requests to, you know, go get another truck over, of, of additional mats. I mean, the loads are becoming pretty...
They're hard to find.
Yeah. So J and J over and send it, you wipe them out again.
Yeah. Yeah, we could just get an update on that.
We, we can compile it. I mean, it's not that difficult to do, but I'll, I'll give you another example. So ventilation, we've, we've spent a lot of money getting the ventilation in this building corrected. In fact, the crew is coming in Friday.
We're over here.
Yes, and they're tomorrow morning at GMS. But a lot of money here identifying what has been going on and getting it fixed, a lot of money at LMS. GMS, we sort of, we're taking a more cautious approach because it's the oldest system. It's the system we probably want to put the least amount of money into, but we still have to make sure that it's adequate, right? So it's like, we're really watching what the needs are there in order to try to address them. And, um, the thing that emerged is that there are, so the crew went in this week to sort of do an overall, overall audit of the system at, at GMS. And they found things unhooked that we didn't know had been unhooked, you know, wires that had been pulled out. So for example, the second boiler room has really been offline. It's just been... So, for example, the second boiler room has really been offline, it's just been unplugged, if you would, from the control systems.
But that's the other thing, we didn't even realize that, really realize that there was a control system. And based on the email we got, hey, about eight percent of the equipment is compatible and was hooked up to a control system at some point.
At GMS?
So what Kirk from Vikings Controls has found, you know, they basically plugged stuff back in and then they were able to talk to the device and say, oh, we can make that device talk to this. Their recommendation is that we install the same controller there that we just upgraded here and upgraded at LMS. And so my first reaction is, okay, how much is that? Well, it's $8,000. And for $8,000, it allows Dave from one computer to say, this is what I want to do at GMS, this is what I want to do at LMS, this is what I want to do at CHS, because it's one controller system. It's three controllers, but it's one system. So he's logged into it. And then they think by the time they get that done and go through the rest of the building, you're looking at $25,000 to $40,000 to get it repaired. And so my first thing is, okay, again, how much do we want to spend on a building of that age? But we're in there for three more years.
I said it's short money for three years.
Thank you, Brian, because I said, my answer was, it's short money when you balance it out to get the ventilation correct. And I want to be able to say to our teachers and I want to be able to say to our parents, you know, that we have to put the money into the ventilation system there so that, for example, the nurse's office at GMS does not have adequate fresh air exchange. Doesn't have any fresh air exchange. And so this system will repair that and to make it work, so. Now, all, everything I just told you, it's all able to be covered by the CARES Act money. So these were unanticipated expenses, right? We didn't see them coming. And this $200,000 plus that we're getting, we can then channel toward those projects. So at this point, I think it's smart money to spend and our intent is to keep plugging ahead and to get it done.
And I think you spend from that money first and you leave the money apart for capital improvement and preserve. And if you start getting overrun, so you start drawing out from that. The other thing, too, is the $40,000 investment at GMS for that controller, it's probably more efficient. You might realize we're saving a lot off of that as well.
So as of right now, we have your marketing, but I just have a resolution for our students.
We have, you know, so honestly, I mean, let's have a dialogue about that and I want the board to think about it. You know, I feel stuck with the community expectation of voting on new positions. You know, does the board have the flexibility to take one-time grant money like this and to say, we're going to hire the following physicians? Do you have that flexibility? I would say, based on the competing warrant article argument, you do, because the last warrant article that was passed seems to say that you don't have to have everything approved by the voters. If they're one-time only non-taxpayer funds and the board directs this, we really think it's important to do this. I think we can do that and then put them on the warrant if it's something we want to keep doing.
Right.
We could put them on the warrant later.
For a temporary position, I think if we have a need for a temporary position or through the end of this school year or something like that, I think the budget committee in this kind of circumstance would be understanding of that and hopefully would support us to make the decisions like that to improve our student experience.
And the board has the authority to receive grant money and to make those decisions. So it's something that, we're not prepared for the presentation tonight on that, but again, big picture for the board to think about, hey, here's a need and here's a way to get after it. So there's another, $260,000 goes a long way. It'll take care of ventilation. Remember, we just put $660,000 in the capital reserve fund, so, you know, we have means to get after projects and to get after other needs that we identified in the midst of pandemic, so.
And if we need the technology sooner than putting it online by the budget for next year.
Yeah, so here's the pickle with tech. Can't get it. So the Chromebooks that we ordered still have not arrived. So the start of your. The start, but they're not even here, so maybe it'll be here after tech comes back, but it's, that's the pickle that we're in. It's that you just cannot get a Chromebook.
We've also allocated above 200, no, 20,000. 20,000 of the last two years Title IV money that they opened up the allowances to. It, it, there was previously only 10% or 15% could be used for tech infrastructure. They opened it up for the last two years because of COVID and I filled in and got approved about $20,000 to put it towards GMS Chromebooks. James is aware of it, Brendan's aware of it, but they just can't get that at this point.
Even at a higher price point.
Well, so Devin has been out buying individuals, right?
There's five.
Sorry?
If you're a group of five, so every week I'm going in five.
And I'm very sympathetic to, we don't want to spend extra taxpayer money on things that we can get a deal on if we wait six months. But I feel like if it's a critical need, you know, and we have the grant money from the state, maybe we seek out Chromebooks at a higher price point than Jason can get when he orders 200 of them.
I think, I think, you know.
Yeah, they're about $100 or more than we were given by the queen spending, but they're, the turnaround is like about 48 and 49.
So he's budgeting roughly 250 and you're spending about 350? So three.
I mean, if our mode of instruction relies on having these devices in the hands of students, I think, I think we have to do it as much as it might stand.
We can go back to Jason and ask him to see if that's a possibility. But he checks with his supplier every Monday and we just hear, not yet. And that's, it's universal. I was just reading an article about, apparently you can't buy a fridge now, so hope your fridge doesn't die because you can't buy a fridge that they're not available. It's like, kind of depressing. Good thing winter's coming in New Hampshire, we have to get old fridge out back. Any other budget goals then?
I'll be responding.
Perfect, we will plug ahead.
I just bring this to community reports and I think the only thing we have is.
Budget. We have completed the review of the town budget and begin voting tomorrow night. Chairman Carter has made a list of his recommendations based on three-year averages. And so maybe we'll be proposing reductions and voting on the beginning tomorrow night, I think. I think we're, the plan is to get through as much as we can in two and a half hours. We start at seven and have a hard stop at nine.
So how is he just, just a question? How is he justifying the application of three-year averages in the midst of a pandemic?
I'm not entirely sure. I think the three-year averages don't include FY 2020.
Okay.
I don't, I received a PDF. I received a PDF and it just says three-year averages, so I'm not sure which three.
I have a better question. No, they mentioned that. So the default budget is probably over the tax cap. But I don't think legally you can change the default budget.
The default.
Huh? Budget planning. No, I said with the default.
The default budget in the tax cap?
The default budget is, per your force, force selection.
You know, maybe Ross would have worked that way or.
No, I think, I think they, I think they got it under the tax cap. The proposed budget is now like 22,000 under the tax cap.
The budget or their default budget?
I think the budget. Don't call me on that. I'll be there tomorrow.
I might be wrong, but I just thought I heard that.
And to Corey's point, I mean, we made a concerted effort to return additional funds, right? So we tightened our ballot, we shut down two schools, we did all the things that enabled us to return the 700,000. And I just hope that that doesn't get held against us because it was an abnormal year, so.
You essentially, yeah, you essentially, I'm sorry, you essentially have two school years that are kind of an anomaly.
Right, right.
Average, average is going to work.
Absolutely.
A couple more years, you know, looking at our budgets.
Yeah.
I mean, between last year and then going to this year, it's like.
And even, I mean, who knows what 2021 is going to be, so.
That's a really good point.
And the only other committee is, is now, now I don't remember the big name.
Can I just ask a question, too? So you've been in the budget discussions with the town. Are there major themes that the budget committee is sort of jarring around or is it?
I think the biggest concern is coming in under the tax cap. And the tax cap is, is very concerning because of the communications project that the voters approved last year. That adds $150,000 to the budget from day one, I mean, at the starting date, so. There have been some reductions made by the board of selectmen and there, I think, because of the valuation, the town valuation going up so high, I think it helps to balance out any increases that they have.
It's additional revenue.
It is additional revenue. And that's another thing, they projected about $50,000 in additional revenue from car registrations. Because people are still buying cars and registering in the town, so I expect that to continue.
This is another place where we're, we're getting, it's a state revenue, so.
Right.
Like, the ones like special education have that number of students, so that's going to happen. And it's looking, it will continue.
I'll give you another one that, this was a major topic the other day from our angle, is that pre-reduce lunch applications are down 25%. So it's very difficult when it's a state waiver for free lunch for everybody to have a family that needs it to fill out paperwork. So, you know, we had to report a number that was a 25% reduction. Here's the thing, that number impacts right across the board. It impacts adequacy, it impacts title grants. And so the superintendents were going nuts on the phone call on Monday with the state. You've got to give us an extension or you've got to, you've got to promise us now that you're going to not look at this year's number based on the previous year. And the OE said, it's in the state law, it's based on this number, you know, blah, blah, blah. We don't, and it has to be calculated now, you have to certify and submit your number. And then it was, you know, just trust us, we'll work on this down the road. And, you know, I had the same reaction. I was just like, you know, I actually looked at Lauren and I said, well, technically, everybody's pre-reduced, can we just put in 1,300 as the number? And she said, no. But the point is that there's, so there's an impact that's going to roll out with that. So we're seeing increased revenues in food service, but we may pay the price down the road, I just don't know.
So the only other committee report I was going to mention is the capital improvement committee for the district itself is going to be meeting under a different name and it's now going to be called the. Facilities Improvement Committee. We are going to be meeting that prior to our next school board meeting.
So we'll meet at 4:30, you know, either here, if we're here again, or if we're back to town, we'll meet there.
Will those meetings be open in public?
They are, they're committee meetings, so they're public meetings. And I think we have to decide what do we want to see happen? There's a lot to talk about in that meeting. So from our activity angle, we have, we have a proposal from Dave Ilian to Kendry and fire an owner's project.
Owner's project.
Requirements, which is sort of a conceptual framework for what we want to see happen at LMS. And then a conceptual framework of what we want to see happen with a new GMS on the Hill. And so Corey and I need to go through those docs and sort of make sure that it aligns with everything that we've talked about. And then we'll bring those over to the committee for review and discussion, so. But that's wicked exciting because it starts to put into print what we want to see happen. The other piece is the, we have walked the site with an architect just to say, walk us through. How do we, how do we turn this school into a new one over there? What are the steps that we need to do? And to explain to her the steps that we've already taken. She actually was quite impressed with the steps that we've taken. And I will just tell you two things. She, she said, I want to walk through this school. I want to know why you have said that you don't want to renovate. And I said, okay, fine, let's go for a walk. We weren't even halfway through and she said, okay, I get it, we're not renovating this. The cost of renovating this will far exceed.
Wow.
Far exceed what you can do with a new building and the efficiency you'll gain with a new building. She said, you're spot on with it.
Wow, just from a walk.
Yeah, well, she's a trained professional in the field.
A lot of, a lot of school practice.
Yeah, that's encouraging.
It's like, I'm leaving.
What's that?
Like, I'm leaving.
No, she actually, she, I checked in, she's very energized by it. She's asked Michelle for the civil engineering work on the site because she wants to see, you know, how did Herriman propose to build a school? Where was it sited and what are the, the things are in the way, I guess, what are the hurdles that would come? So once they apply on that, that's right up on the Hill. So, yeah, so very energized by that conversation. There's no commitment to do anything with that architectural firm, but we didn't, we didn't bring in somebody who doesn't know what to do either. So it was like, let's engage and then we'll go from there. So I think facilities improvement is going to have a ton of work to do very quickly. It's exciting work and it's Brian and Tina that are on that, right?
Well, it brings to policies then.
So the policy presentation for tonight is on J E C A, which is Admission of Resident Students Policy. So a couple of things, if you look at the existing policy that's attached, it was actually approved back in 1998 and it hasn't, it was adopted on June 17th of 1998 and it hasn't been touched since then from what we can tell. So it was definitely, as we go through the review of policies, this is one that we wanted to visit. There have been numerous changes to RSA 19312 in the interim, so we want to make sure that the policy is brought up to speed with the current law. The other thing is that the feeling we had and in looking at the model of policy from the School Board Association is that our policy got too deep in the weeds. It really had details in the policy that weren't necessary. And so the recommendation is that you simply cite the district of residence of a student is defined by RSA 19312-2. And in there are all the details that we then need to follow. So we can put procedural safeguards in to enact that law. And then if the law changes, the policy is in sync with the law because you're just referencing back to that. So I don't know that we provided you with the law, but if you take a look at it, you'll see that there are numerous subparts that define where a child goes to school. The second major part of this policy is that it just defines new resident students so that as students enroll in Litchfield, so they come here for the very first time, what are they required to do in order to demonstrate that they are residents and to get them enrolled? And then the last thing is, the very last paragraph just commits to an annual verification of residency for everybody. And you'll notice that it says on paper and electronic. So I put paper because right now we don't have the electronic form up and going, but Andrea's in the process of developing it and I think it's going to be in play. We know it will be in play before kindergarten registration. So anybody out there with a preschooler who's planning to enroll, we'll be doing that online this year through the Power School Module that allows them to enroll. The beauty is that they're inputting all their data directly and so it'll be populated in with our assistance going through to verify it, but no longer entering it off of paper form. So it's a huge, a huge asset to have this in play. And then for students who are already in the system, next August, you'll get a form with, you'll get an email and there will be a link that you click and you will be, you know, agreeing to all the things that you normally get on paper. It will all be done electronically as a parent and that'll include a residency affidavit. So basically, you're just going to certify that you still live in the district and that you're still a legal resident by law. So that's another piece that we have not been doing annually. Once, once you're in, you're sort of in. And if you look at the, did they get this? And if you look at the, did they get this, Michelle? So, so this is the newly revised proof of residency form. And so it just aligns with the law and it clearly shows what you need from category one and category two with an affidavit at the bottom that somebody is signing off on so that we know students enrolling are here because they are legal residents of the district. So I know it looks like we cut a lot out. It was a bunch of unnecessary stuff, honestly. So this will be a tighter, cleaner process going forward.
I think a motion to accept J E C A for first reading.
Second.
For the discussion.
I just, one small thing. Should it say, should register with the school? Because if everything's going to be electronic, you don't physically have to go to the school?
Where is, which form are you looking at?
I mean, at the form are you looking at?
I'm looking at the J E C A, yeah. It's the first under new resident students. All new residents who are accompanied by a parent and guardian that resides with the student should register with this school or.
That's, yeah, that's an easy adjustment. We'll, we'll make that adjustment the next time.
It's not long, but it's up in about three minutes.
We have a motion in the second. Any other discussion?
Here we go. Also, if everyone's seen the thought by saying, I would like to close. That brings us to our board of directors for being there.
Yeah, so since the board last met, I mean, it's been pretty busy with adjustments to GMS in particular. As you know, at one point, I think we had four active cases in the school, one cluster of related cases at GMS. At the same time, we were managing the additional cases that were occurring at LMS. So there was a lot going on in a very small window at a time. And because of that, we had staff who were out. At one point, I think we were up to fifteen staff members at GMS who were not able to come to work. Twelve of them had been in quarantines imposed by us based on contact that they had with the students who were positive. And then the other three, I believe, were, their, their children in other districts had been quarantined because of situations in those schools and they had to stay home to provide daycare for and care for their children. So it made it impossible for us to operate. And the day that we made the decision, Dan had all hands on deck and, and public on to make the work. It really was not a good situation. So we've engaged in the dialogue about, so what will it look like to reopen? And parents have asked us, what can we learn from all of this? And.
It's a good question.
It's a great question and Dan's, Dan's really struggled with it. We look at other districts that, you know, the minute you say, okay, so, so Salem hasn't had as many cases. Salem invested two hundred and fifty thousand, or no, I think it was a million dollars into people, into plastic. I mean, they have plastic around everything, right? Did that make a difference because you're seeing that? But it's so hard in a controlled experiment to say, yes, it was the plastic that resulted in this because, you know, Salem High School's a completely new building with state of the art ventilation in it. What's the ventilation like in the other schools in Salem? Unknown for us, you know. So when you really start to pick this apart, it's so hard to say, here's a single cause that we would, you know, if we could do it all over again, it might have had an impact.
And the other districts too, even if you compare among elementary schools, some are high, right? Some are fully overhauled, some are, you know, everybody is implemented differently, so it's hard to compare. You can't really, you can't totally separate it too. Right, right. So.
So at, at the end of it, it was hard for us to pinpoint. So I really think that what Dan is intending is to pay more attention to masks when students come back. Because we do feel strongly that all the guidance is saying the mask, you know, stopping the droplets from spreading, that that's a key strategy. And the other thing is, this is why we've engaged with Viking to do the ventilation. Because if, if droplets are the key indicator, then making sure there's fresh air properly entering into the building is another key strategy that we have. So at this point, those are our major themes going into it. And, you know, just continuing to monitor and continuing to appeal to parents to, I, I, it's wicked annoying to a parent to keep a kid with the sniffles home. But right now, you know, it seems like that's something that we just have to embrace. The beauty is that there can be that pivot to remote for the child. But really it's, it's about the physical distancing and if somebody's not well, to take that time.
They're going to shut down and all the sports are going to be banned. That seems to be the common thread of how it's getting into a lot of the schools. So as we get towards the end of those seasons, we'll probably see, hopefully.
Yes.
Unfortunately, like one of the sports that caused some of the problem is hockey and hockey goes on forever.
And they play last day.
Even though they stopped it here, a lot of those club teams are going to go play at the Juiciest.
So I'm just saying, a lot of sports I want to down except the hockey, just keep going, then basketball.
Did we learn anything? I, I looked very briefly at the dashboard. Are we still the, are we the only school with a cluster at this point?
I have it up. Actually, we don't show with a cluster.
Cause they're recovered now, probably, right?
Well, it was still there the other day, so is it down today? I couldn't get in this morning, the site was down.
Yeah. Cause that was my question. Do we learn anything from having that many cases related to one classroom that we could change differently?
So the only other thing is that. I want, I want to be sensitive to how.
So.
But, but we had, we had a student who struggled with some of the rules. And being good educators and helpers, we wanted to help the student understand and follow the rules. And we may have needed to be a little swifter at saying, you're not following the rules and the rules are for everybody's safety. That's, that's a potential, but that's a judgment call all the time.
Again, it's spec, still speculative. We don't, we don't know.
Right. And we did have some parents write in and ask if we would mandate that masks are required even if you're seated at your desk because, because of the question, because of the, you know, because of the nature of, I think especially elementary kids, that there are going to be moments where, you know, they take it off to scratch and smell, or they sneeze or, you know. I didn't know if that was something that, if that's on the radar as a further accommodation because we had so many cases.
So in, in talking to DHHS, the presence of masks seem not to really have an impact. I, I think they have an impact. I totally believe the data shows that the masks have the impact, but when you're determining close contact, negate the mask. So it's really hard to say whether that's going to result in a positive or not. So it's certainly something that Dan's aware of because he thought, okay, on the playground, you know, is there a greater likelihood? Of course, we can't trace any of these back to playground spread, but is there a greater likelihood that two kids playing might get inside? You know, you tell them to stay six feet away, they may not. And so do we go to masks on the playground? He hasn't determined that yet, but those are the kinds of things that he's examining and thinking about.
I also noticed that like the bus that was carrying my kids this morning didn't have the windows open. So I actually emailed over to first student. They responded right away to me, said they were in touch with the driver and low and behold, this afternoon, windows were open. So I think, you know, parents notice any of that kind of, you know, you can see that clearly on the bus, first student is being responsive.
So I found them to be completely responsive. Everything we've sent them, they've taken care of. They're very, very responsive to our requests. So that's what I have at, at GMS and that remote situation. Other general COVID updates, I'm trying to think. Other than if the board looks at the, the state and national numbers, they're escalating. It's pretty alarming when you really look at what's happening. We, we continue to be in a good part of the country. So the best states are Vermont, Maine, Hawaii and New Hampshire. And so those are the four best right now. So we're number four from the bottom as the state of New Hampshire. And, and actually there are now more cases. It's spreading north. It worries me because Merrimack County has popped up as the red county. And so it's definitely something that's, that's taking a foothold when Merrimack County is relatively rural and yet that's where the cases are currently, so.
Me was the school dashboard today. I forget. I think it was the, I look at so many different maps with all the counties. There was, I think it was the school dashboard today, still had us in yellow. But we were something like ninety-nine cases for a hundred thousand or something like that. Does it, it switches at a hundred cases?
I think it does.
Yeah. So that was, that was concerning to me. We're very close to a hundred cases. Eighty-two, eighty-two point eight percent, eighty-two point eight. Merrimack said red, which I haven't seen.
Yeah, first, I was shocked when it popped up yesterday.
Including Nashville and Manchester or?
Uh, no, I think it was excluded, excluded. It was like.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the manifest?
Um, I need to see the third signature. I'll do it after. Thank you.
We have to back to public input. All our public left.
Actually, excuse me. I, I need to call. It's a good comment. Don't get nervous.
I'm very serious.
I mean, I still. I gotta plug, plug. I know I'll get a little feedback from this. I fully expect it. But I do want to preface this by saying never in my seventeen years of being here have I gotten out of the comments or the phone. And this is not a criticism of anybody in the district, the board or anything like that. But I was wowed by some of what I heard here tonight. And I wanted to say that I have never in my, in my career in school districts, and I've been in the public, never seen a team who works so hard toward an objective initiative as the team in this district. Teachers work very, very hard. They have complex job. It's not easy. I wouldn't want to do it. But our administrative team and our, the people in our S A U office, we work really hard. We have complex jobs. It's a fact. Teachers, you know, every teacher in the school just was very hard educating our students. And, and also during the pandemic, it was a very big challenge for them. But I don't want them or anyone else to lose sight of the fact that it's been a big challenge for us as the S A U office as well. The S A U office, the admin team and even, even me, we are just as overwhelmed. And we're working really hard. And the level and the depth of knowledge between Dr. Jettie and Ms. Whitman, I continue to be very, very impressed. And I have a lot of respect for them as I do for the whole team and the board and the teachers in the district. But I want, I want the teachers to know as well as the students, parents and board that many of us in the S A U office work very long, hard hours in and out of the office. And we work really hard to accomplish the goals that are set for other boards. So I, I just wanted to say that because I just think it's important. Thank you.
All right. With that, it brings us to non-public session. RSA, you have a call to be one. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, yes.